Thank you all. The first item on the agenda is the meeting summary of May 2014 that was edited by staff and circulated. Anyone have any comments on the meeting summary? Any edits? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion by Commissioner Kaufman seconded by Commissioner Casey. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's ten to zero. Next, we'll move on to the public portion of a number of comments, a number of folks here to speak. I would just let everyone know that the rules of the commission are as follows. Everyone gets three minutes to speak, and if you can take up to six minutes to speak, if someone else who put a card in gives you their time. So, just FYI, I would have someone stand and say that they'd like to give their three minutes to someone else. So, that is the rule of the commission. You'll have to come to the podium, state your name, spell it for the record, and we'll move on from there. The order is as they're in front of me, but I did want to invite Legislators Kern to address the commission. So, legislator, please go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it's good to see you and all the members of the commission. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am Stephen Stern, S.T.E.R.N. It is my great privilege to serve as Suffolk County Legislature representing 16th Legislative District. And I'm here today to address the analysis of the proposed zone change regarding the Seasons project in Elwood. Unfortunately, there's nothing really to indicate in this report that it was a result of a full and complete analysis of this proposal. It is a cursory report at best for an analysis of what is before this commission as a "regionally significant" project. Clearly not enough consideration was given to the concerns that have been raised by the Elwood community. For such a project of regional significance, I hope you would agree that area residents, many of whom are here today, should be given every opportunity to share their concerns with you. I also hope that you would agree that they have every expectation that a thorough analysis can and should be done, and there's really just not enough meat on the bone here as a result of this analysis. In fact, we had a meeting just up in Huntington Town Hall the other night talking about an unrelated sidewalk project where we spent more time and had more professionals talking about sidewalks that ultimately will go up and down Elwood Road than the expertise that's been put into this analysis. It talks about things like access to health care facilities. So, basically, this is a report that says, yes, we approve it, but it would be nicer if there was a hospital a little closer by. And I'm sure you would also agree that that can apply to anybody who happens to live on Lori Jean Lane, just a couple of blocks from the proposed site. It also talks about inadequate access to transportation. I can tell you that area residents are not very concerned about whether new residents coming in can easily get to the DSW or the Elwood Cineplex. They are concerned about their quality of life, as well as many other issues that they're going to be raising before you today. The town has said that mitigation efforts would be addressed later by the planning board during site plan review, and that, of course, is true. But that doesn't mean that those concerns and those efforts should not be addressed at this level and in this report. It also mentions density, but again, it does it in a cursory way and simply suggests that the town take a look at their own 2020 long view plan and make every effort to make sure that this project complies with that. It does not call out particular sections. It does not say at all whether or not this plan as proposed would comply with the town's own plan. All that being said, it is not credible to me that we can make an informed decision based on what has been provided in this analysis today. As you can see, plenty of area residents are here to ensure that this commission is aware of many of their concerns, their reasonable concerns, and today, I simply respectfully request that you, as the commission, give them every opportunity to be heard to share those concerns with you. Thank you.
Thank you, legislator. Appreciate that. Appreciate your time. The first card I have here is Edward McCarthy. Sir, you have three minutes. Please state your name and spell it for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Edward McCarthy. I'm with the law firm of Ingraham &amp; Smith, and we represent the Elwood School District. I should note from the beginning that Mary Jane Mackey has ceded her three minutes to me, so I would...
Well, why don't we have her come up and say that? Ms. Mackey? Is she here? Okay. Great. Right there.
So, I would echo Legislative Stern's comments that the staff analysis report by the Planning Department was insufficient and cursory at best. I just want to initially start by stating that in order to offer meaningful public participation in events such as this, you know, the district never received any type of notice of today's meeting, and as an adjoining landowner to the proposed site, we received no formal notice of the meeting. We had to rely upon members of the community to inform us that the meeting was occurring here today, and I think that if we had more notice of today's meeting, you'd have a greater public participation this afternoon. Additionally, I'll note that to hold this commission on such an important matter two days before a legal holiday, I know many people are on vacation and were not able to attend today's meeting. So, with that said, I just want to state that we understand as a school district that your role as a commission is advisory to the town of Huntington. However, with that said, the district has had an opportunity to review the expanded environmental assessment form submitted by the applicant in connection with its request for a change of zoning. Based upon the documents submitted by the applicant, the district believes that the town board, together with the Suffolk County Planning Commission in its advisory role, does not have sufficient information at this time to render a decision regarding the change of zoning. This belief is predicated on the fact that the required EAF form is incomplete and requires further investigation to determine the nature of the impact that this proposed action will have on the environment. If the commission decides to move forward with the recommended approval today or at some point in the future, the district respectfully submits that additional modifications accompany such recommendations to the town of Huntington. What are those recommendations? Our primary concern as a school district is that of environmental integrity and protection. Environmental protection is identified as the first critical countywide priority according to the Suffolk County Planning Commission's charter. Clearly, several identified environmental concerns related to the proposed action have not been addressed or even referenced in the Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning Analysis and Staff Recommendations. The EAF itself of the proposed action identified several issues in need of mitigation in long-term maintenance as a result of underwater injection wells, underground and above-ground storage tanks, New York State DEC spills, and land use specific issues on the proposed site. The results of certain sediment samples collected from the UIWs exhibited levels of contamination above the Suffolk County Department of Health Services' action levels. Of most concern to the district is the fact that the review of analytical results...
McCarthy, we've reached the end of your time, so if you just let Ms. Mackey come up and just state your name for the record, ma'am, and spell that, and then you can just state for the record that you're giving your three minutes to Mr. McCarthy.
Mary Jane Mackey. I've lived in Elwood for 50 years. I relinquish my time to this gentleman.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Again, a great concern of the district was the fact that analytical results from soil samples revealed concentrations of pesticides and ore metals at concentrations above applicable United States Environmental Protection Agency generic soil screening levels. Specifically, the report included that arsenic was detected at concentrations above federal levels. So, what the district is requiring is for the commission to go back, and if they're going to approve this application, to implement and incorporate additional modifications that address some of the environmental concerns of the district and the residents of the district. Proper review of the proposed action would mandate further investigation by the town of Huntington related to these conditions. In the event that the commission recommends approval, at the very least, additional modifications should accompany the recommendation, such as soil management plans and soil maintenance plans. Lastly, I just want to get to the impact that the proposed action may have on actual traffic. As the commission may be aware, Elwood Road is a main thoroughfare for the Elwood community and for students and staff members traveling to and from Elwood High School and the middle school. While the proposed action could negatively impact traffic patterns in this area, the department has failed to address that the stadium intersection is even near a school. While the EAF indicated that there would be a decrease in traffic levels during certain portions of the day, studies have not specifically addressed what the traffic impact of the proposed action will have on the district busing, student walkers, employers, and public access to district facilities. Moreover, no study has measured what traffic impact will be experienced by the district during construction. Obviously, the district, this commission, and the town board should exhaust all possible investigatory measures to ensure that the traffic impact of the proposed action will not jeopardize the health, safety, and welfare of students and those served with the district's educational mission. In conclusion, we just want to state that we understand that the Suffolk County Planning Commission is charged with an advisory role, but the EAF submitted by the applicant is wholly insufficient and significantly fails to properly demonstrate the environmental and operational impact of the proposed action on the Elwood Union Free School District. Moreover, it appears that the department has failed to adequately address or even reference the above- referenced impact in its statutory and advisory role to the town of Huntington. Therefore, the district respectfully requests that the commission recommend a disapproval of the proposed action or at the very least incorporate additional modifications that address the operational and environmental concerns of the school district. And at this point, I would just like to submit to the commission some written comments to be incorporated as part of the public minutes.
Thank you. You can do that. Thank you so much, Mr. McCarthy. Next, we have Agnes Michaelis. Am I saying that right? Correct me when you get up there. Sorry about that.
My name is Agnes Michaelis, and I am not feeling too well today, so I would like to be excused, and I would like to give my minutes to Wendy Herman, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be fine. Thank you. Ms. Herman, you also have a card in, so you can have your three minutes plus Mrs. Michaelis's. That's six minutes. Just please tell your last name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Wendy Herman, H-E-R-M-A-N. I am an attorney here, not regaling, but as a part of the Preserving Elwood Now group and also as a 23-year resident of Elwood. Based on the limited documentation submitted by the applicant in connection with its request for a change of zoning, I believe the commission does not have sufficient information at this time to render an opinion whether or not to support the applicant's request. The applicant gives very limited, inaccurate, and incomplete representation of the facts. The commission has no facts or information from opponents, nor have the opponents to this request, and given an opportunity to challenge the applicant's contentions in his submission to this commission. In a 2008 update to the town of Huntington's Horizon 2020 comprehensive plan, the town acknowledged that the town was "nearly built out to existing zoning." How it responds to the changes over the coming decade, the market demand, and adaptive reuse of structures, properties, and areas would have to be managed with a "careful implementation of the strategy set forth in the plan." The overall goal of the plan is to enable new development where it is best supported by existing infrastructure, to reduce impacts traditional land use patterns, and ensure continuation of a high quality of life. New development directed to a new sector, which in this case is the Elwood School District at its core, should be where its best access imposes the least potential adverse traffic impact. Generalized established zoning patterns will be retained. The adoption of the plan is not anticipated to cause growth-inducing impacts, but to focus careful growth where it can be reasonably sustained. The plan will reduce impacts in areas experiencing growth without potential for infrastructure and roadway capacity enhancement. This plan speaks to protecting and keeping exactly what Elwood is today. Elwood is a hamlet. It's not a town or incorporated village. In the 2010 census, we had a population of approximately 12,000, only 5.5 percent of the total town. We only occupy 4.8 square miles, or 3.5 percent of the township. Over 90 percent of Elwood is single-family residential homes, R40, R20, R10, R7, and R5 zoning. The applicant misrepresents the character of the community. Fair Oaks Court, which is adjacent to the subject property, consists of eight single-family residences built on one-acre lots, but is characterized by the applicant as a development. A two-acre residential farm is characterized by the applicant as commercial, and a large family-owned sod farm is industrial. The applicant misrepresents the present state of the property. The Oak Tree Dairy has ceased to be operational as a dairy processor and distributor since the applicant's original submission back in 2012. There is no more processing inside, and there are no more trucks outside going in and out and up and down on Elwood Road. The present owner has sold off all his milk processing equipment, and the business is shut. The result is that the "special use permit" is no more. The R40 zoning remains on the property as it has always been. No "industry" could ever be permitted to occupy the property as the applicant has suggested and has told town of Huntington residents in its efforts to garner support for its project. The applicant has gone to great lengths to mischaracterize the present state of Elwood to make you believe it is trending or transitional to a more commercial, industrial, and dense community. I assure you, it is not. A gated community development is completely out of character and conformity with the surrounding community. Elwood has no gates anywhere. The applicant's proposal, 360 additional households in one full swoop, the density of the development of nine and a half households per acre on 37 acres presently zoned for one-acre lots or less. Even by its own submission to the commission, a map of the area of the building it surrounds reflects only single residential properties. All of Elwood looks much like that. The Elwood residents have argued from the outset that this development is uncharacteristic of the community. Ironically, by the applicant's own admission, when it was asked, is the proposed action consisted with recommended uses in the adopted local land use plan? The applicant said no. The town Horizon's 2020 plan update recommends low-density residential use. The applicant submitted a traffic impact study that concluded the impact of the traffic on Elwood Road would be minimal to none. Really? 500 to 700 additional cars. Their study belies the truth, so much so that the town board ordered a second traffic impact study, the results of which are not released. The applicant has thus far refused to propose any other kind of build for the site, the most appropriate one that has been suggested to the town board, single-family homes, 30 houses on one-acre lots, 50 houses on half-acre lots, or a suitable number of small, affordable, accessible ranch-style homes that local seniors could live in when their homes become too much for them, all in keeping with the present character of Elwood. The applicant will hear none of it. Keeping the character and quality of life in the present community is something that our town's Horizon 2020 plan demands, that of a tight-knit community centered around its school district. What the applicant is asking for, what is trying to persuade this commission and our town board to do is to turn Elwood on its head. Again, based upon the limited documents submitted by the applicant, and because those that oppose this build have not had an opportunity to submit information in opposition, I believe that the commission does not have sufficient information at this time to render an opinion on the change of zoning request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Appreciate that. Mr. Ron Gaudreau? Sir, if you could spell your last name for the record.
Okay. I wonder why. Just Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Ron Gaudreau, G-A-U-D-R-E-A-U-L-T. Thank you very much. I live in Northport, and I've been a resident of the town of Huntington and Suffolk County for 50 years. I both live here and I've worked here for 41 years at Huntington Hospital. I'm retired now, and I choose to stay here because of the quality of life in the township of Huntington, the Northport and Elwood area. However, the housing situation, the shortage of housing situation, has been well-known for many years. Young people and people who are in their retirement years, who no longer can or are willing to manage the responsibilities of owning a home and all of the chores that go, so we go with it. So, we have an out-vibration of people who are leaving the county and leaving the township for this type of housing that's being proposed in this application. I'm the president of Hand in Hand for Seniors. That's an organization that's modeled after about 150 villages, they're called, throughout the country, and their sole mission is very simple, is to try to keep people in their homes for as long as they can throughout the aging process. Hand in Hand supports this project as a badly needed housing component to the inventory that we currently have. The reasons, I think, and you well know, that the aging population of 65 and over is growing rapidly, so if there's a shortage now, not going forward with this type of housing is simply going to exasperate this situation. The town is mature from a zoning standpoint. There's not going to be a lot more building going forward. The estimates, I believe, are 97% to 98%, given the current zoning picture. So, the type of property that we're talking about converting in a very responsible way is not going to come up very often, and we must make the best of it. I think the developers have taken a responsible approach. They have developed a plan that is in harmony with the neighborhood, that's consistent with the town plans, and that makes sense for Huntington. The density is far below what is allowed for the zoning that they're applying for, less than 10 units per acre. It's not a threat to the schools. In fact, I'm surprised that the people from schools didn't complain about the 18-wheelers going up and down Elwood Road and the open lagoons and the odor problems that were emitted from this dairy for many years. I'd rather have a few more Toyota Priuses going up and down Elwood Road than these 18-wheelers, rather. So, I think it's a sensible recommendation. I think you're...
Sir, your time's expired. Please wrap up.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I hope that you approve this particular, recommend approval of this project.
Thanks for your time. Lucille Rizzuto? Rizzuto.
Hi. I'm Lucille Rizzuto. I'm a resident for 48 years of Elwood. I'm relinquishing my time to Richard Ward.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you being here. Mr. Ward, are you here? All right. Then you have six minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Richard Ward, W-A-R-D. I live at 53 Lori Jean Lane in East Northport, and I've been a resident of Huntington since 1959. I'm here to publicly comment on the Seasons. I will be submitting some supplemental written materials following my presentation. One of the things also that I wanted to touch on, and I think has been, the question has been raised by Stephen Stern, a legislator, and that is, after taking a look at the commission's guidelines, just by inference, Section 3.9 of your guidelines says that really the commission should be secluded from taking any action when being aware that material facts were omitted or material facts used to support a determination are erroneous, which is basically a specific criteria for reversal. And I believe at this point that there's been a false and misleading information that was provided by the petitioner to the referral agency. Example, Body 1. The most egregious, and that has been touched on here, is the contention that the Oak Tree Dairy Farm is currently a dairy-producing trucking facility. Documentation provided by the New York State Department of Agriculture and Marketing dated May 8, 2014 refutes that contention has been recognized as is in possession of the referring agency and available to you now. Business ceased on March 15, 2013, 14 months prior to the referral to the commission. Number 2, the adjacent property on Elwood Board of Education requested the town of Huntington to reject the developer's rezoning application based upon safety and health issues associated with the development. For unknown reasons, the supplemental information, I believe, has not been provided to the commission by the referring agency. The commission's guidelines would have surely caused a different modification in comments in the resulting July 2, 2014, report, and potentially a different determination. I personally was concerned that the report did not have the word "draft" on the top of it, based on the fact that we were going to have a hearing and that additional input was forthcoming, and hopefully, no action will take place and modifications, additional modifications and comments could be added. Next, life and safety issues were provided to the referring agency by the Elwood Taxpayers Association. I'm the vice president of governmental affairs for that organization, who are civic advocate for the 4,000 families within the hamlet, and specifically as relates to automobile drivers. Based upon the most recent National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration statistics, teenagers and older people are the riskiest drivers. They stand at opposite ends of the demographic spectrum, but statistics show that overall teenagers and older drivers are involved in far more crashes and highway fatalities than any other age group. Mile for mile, crash rate for drivers aged 16 to 17, for example, is almost nine times as high as that for middle-aged drivers. Proximity, less than 1,000 feet from the high school, in demographics, the developer even projects that there will be over 500 senior drivers, are a lethal combination statistically proven by NHTSA. Adding the unfavorable traffic conditions that currently exist on Elwood Road only increases the risk of a fatal occurrence. The developer publicly stated that their occupancy experience in their age restricted communities shows an average age of 6 to 5. Statistically, NHTSA, this age, is the initial point where senior driving ability begins to decline. To be party knowingly creating a condition that is, that would be purely unconscionable. Unintended consequences might be a justifiable excuse, as referring authorities and commissions have been made aware of this reality. Forewarn is foreon. And I believe, taking a look at the commission's guidelines, one of the things that this commission should be adding to that is, based on the aging population, the number of senior drivers that are going to remain in Suffolk County, and the consideration that should be made in placing them within proximity such as this, the school, where you have a teenage population, those drivers, not only are they attending the school, but also those that attend athletic events or other social events at the school. So, again, just something else to consider moving forward. I also, so thank you very much. I'll be providing my submissions to the court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Appreciate your time. Mr. Slazinski? Sir, please come to the podium, spell your last name for the record, and you have your three minutes.
Yes, my name is Richard Slazinski, S-L-E-S-I-N-S-K. Hi. Thank you. I'd like to thank the members of the County Planning Commission for providing us the opportunity to address you this afternoon. Again, my name is Richard Slazinski, a resident of the small hamlet of Elwood and the Elwood School District. I would like to read you a statement prepared by Dan Giacconi, the vice president and 11-year veteran of the Elwood Board of Education. Here's the letter. The Elwood Board of Education, as judiciaries of the Elwood School District and an effective agency in this rezoning application, have come out in strong opposition to the BK-Elwood Seasons development for key reasons as follows. Number 1, lack of planning on behalf of the developers or the town of Huntington to remediate the heavily contaminated soil on the property in question, as it is congruent to our high school, middle school campus, which accommodates over 1,400 students per day and a couple hundred staff members and parents. Number 2, the town of Huntington and Engel Berman have failed to put forward an adequate traffic study that accounts for the multiple arrival and dismissal times of our students that travel along the Elwood Road as the entrance to the campus is just yards from the property in question, which can severely impact our transportation operations and costs, and further, the additional safety issues for students that walk to school along Elwood Road. Number 3, the potential long-term threat to the district by having 360 housing units when the 55-plus covenant cannot remain in perpetuity or be upheld in courts. Number 4, a gated community of several hundred new residents, approximately a 20% increase of the 55-plus demographic in the Elwood community, has little or no vested interest in our schools... sixty housing units when the fifty-five-plus covenant cannot remain in perpetuity or be upheld in courts. Number four, a gated community of several hundred new residents, approximately a twenty percent increase of the fifty-five-plus demographic in the Elwood community, has little or no vested interest in our schools or the greater Elwood community. Gated communities in a small hamlet like Elwood divides a community and is not within the character of our close suburban setting that currently exists. I contend there is no benefit to the community by rezoning this parcel of land. This project is completely about money. Profits for the current owners of the dairy, who have been unable to sell this land after over a decade of trying, large profits for the Engel Berman Group, the developer, and large campaign contributions made to our current town supervisor Frank Petroni and Council Member Mark Cuthbertson. Both officials admitted to accepting campaign contributions at a public meeting last October. This application is about money, not about community or the environment, or the sanctity of our schools and safety of our children. And it is certainly not about affordable housing for senior citizens.
Sir, your time's expired. Thank you for being here.
Not at a price tag of over four hundred and fifty thousand plus.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Helen Keller?
My name is Helen Keller, K-E-L-L-E-R, a resident of Elwood for over forty-seven years. I don't want to bemoan everybody and give you, you know, hearing aids from repeating everything that everybody else said. We all know that it's too dense, it's too populated, we're all concerned about an environment. I just want to bring home one point. I was a former secretary to the zoning board of appeals when this application, after the fire, came before the town. This makes it look like, oh, the zoning board gave them a special use permit so they can do everything they wanted. They were not allowed to have eighty trucks on that piece of property. They were only allowed to have ten. They were supposed to shut their motors off and not keep them running when they were delivering and picking up goods from that site, and a whole slew of other restrictions. So this makes it sound like the zoning board just gave away the whole town. It didn't. And it makes us look like we stood for all this. We didn't. We fought this. They were a bad neighbor for all the years they were there, and they're still a bad neighbor. The other point I want to make is, can you imagine fifty-six structures on thirty-five acres? Okay? Right now, if you put five houses, thirty-five houses there at one acre each, you have, at the long shot, one hundred and seventy-five people versus, say, seven hundred people in those nine and a half units to the acre. So you can put nine houses, nine units on one acre. If you look at it that way, nine houses on one acre, how does that look to you? So think about the density. That's not what we want to see in our community. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Christine Duramo? Ma'am, welcome. Spell your last name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
D-I-R-A-I-M-O, and I believe I've been given Mr. George Hoffman's time.
Do you want me to step up? Yes, please, Mr. Hoffman. Spell your last name for the record, and then you can give your time to Ms. Duramo.
My name's George Hoffman, and my last name is H-O-F-F-M-A-N.
Great. All right, Ms. Duramo, you're recognized for six minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Suffolk County Planning Commission. I am addressing you in support of the Seasons at Elwood. I am a resident of the Elwood School District, specifically residing in Old Chester Hills. I am also a director on the Board of the Old Chester Hills Civic Association. Our community, through the Board, has given a letter of support to the Town of Huntington for this project. This was done after very careful consideration, many meetings, much correspondence, and, you know, we felt it was the majority of our community was in support of this project. I have been a resident of the Town of Huntington for approximately twenty years. I am an attorney and a real estate broker, and have conducted business in the Town of Huntington for many years. I do a lot of work with seniors, both in legal capacity and regarding housing issues. I have been attending town and civic meetings for over two years regarding this project, and have heard the issues presented by those in favor and those that oppose the project. And these meetings at times become quite contentious, and much information is spread about this project. The developer, Engel Berman, has really given so much of their time to community outreach for this project in order to present the facts, the appropriate facts. After assessing the issues, I remain committed to supporting this development for the following reasons. It is undisputed that there is a tremendous need in Huntington for this type of housing to accommodate the needs of the fifty-five and better community in our area. They will be able to remain in the community that they helped build and sustain for years, and remain close to their friends and families. It will also be a much easier lifestyle for them with activities and lower maintenance on their homes. The development will also positively enhance the Elwood community, both economically and aesthetically. Engel Berman has addressed the concerns of the community and even changed their original plans in response to all that community outreach. The density was significantly decreased, well below the retirement zoning requirements. Any more reduction will lead to higher prices and make this less affordable for the intended recipients. In addition, a senior community is a better neighbor than an industrial plant. I myself, living in the area, right in that area for over twelve years, had smelled the fumes and heard the complaints over and over for years about that industrial plant. The seniors are much better neighbors. Engel Berman has also appropriately addressed concerns about additional traffic in the area. I travel Elwood Road daily, and I firmly believe their plans will correct any existing traffic condition. If this project doesn't go forward, who will address this issue? My fear is that there will never be any correction of any possible traffic issue on Elwood Road. Lastly, the project will provide increased tax revenues, which will benefit the Elwood School District without adding the burdens of additional students. I also attend the school board meetings regularly, and know these additional funds are needed. It was recently stated by the Board that they have depleted their reserves and will be piercing the tax cap for the next budget. Please support and approve the Seasons at Elwood, and let's move forward for our seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. William Hubbs? Thank you, sir. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the Commission. I currently reside on Hammond Road directly across Elwood Road from the proposed project. I fully support the project. As Ms. Duramo stated, the school district will deplete their entire emergency funds with the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget. For twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, they have already announced that they plan to pierce the tax cap. As a taxpayer, this is upsetting. You know, it's, life in Elwood is becoming very expensive. I have a lovely home, but taxes are very high. By adding three hundred and sixty additional tax-paying residences, it will ease the burden of the ever-increasing, never-decreasing school budget. We all need a break. No one wants to talk about what's happening to our school districts. Our neighboring school district, Northport, has already exhausted their emergency reserves. One of the most important things in maintaining our home values is maintaining a good school system. I am not against having the best possible education for the kids in Elwood. I just think that it's time that we add some new development that does not produce any school-aged children, does not stress the school system, but provides a little bit of help to the existing tax base. As I stated, I live directly across the street, one house in from Elwood Road. It's a major commuting highway. There's not really much that anyone can do about that road, other than make it four lanes wide, which nobody wants. I don't believe that the project will greatly add to the commuter traffic problems. I really, really would urge you to support and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Walter Raab? All right, please spell your last name, and you have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Walter Raab, spelling R-A-B as in boy E. I want to thank the members of the panel for having this hearing, and I've been a resident of Elwood for the past thirty-nine years. My house is around the block from the proposed condos. A little history of myself, I am the recent co-president of the Elwood Taxpayers Association, where I was co-president for the past five years, ex-president of the Green Lawn Civic Association, where I was president for the past fourteen years, and a member of the Green Lawn Fire Department, where I was a member for forty years and am still active. I've been involved in many community activities and fights along the way. I wish to comment on a couple of things. One that I haven't heard too much of, the thing is, development will use too much of our precious water supply provided by the Green Lawn Water District. We have to protect our water supply for the future, for the people that live there now. Another issue that should be taken into consideration is the fire department. These condos will be in the Green Lawn Fire District. I am not speaking here today as a representative of the fire department, but just as a member who knows what's going on. This proposal is like the senior housing project that's on Polanski Road in Green Lawn called Palmerock Village. The Green Lawn Fire Department ambulances respond to Palmerock almost daily, and sometimes several times a day. These are volunteers, and they are stretched thin, and the district has had to hire a paid medic to respond to alarms. If these new condos are built, they may have to hire more paid people, which means more taxes for the residents. Along with these additional ambulance calls, the Huntington Hospital Emergency Room will become even more crowded, and they are very busy now. Anybody that goes to the emergency room, you have a long wait in there. And a friend of mine had a recent heart issue, she was there for twenty-four hours waiting for a bed upstairs. They're overcrowded now, and all these people that live there fifty-five and over, there will be a lot of ambulance calls, and they will all be going to Huntington Hospital. Another fallacy that I think the builder stated is that these residents over fifty-five will only leave in their cars after ten AM and not return during rush hour, because they will all be retired. Well, about ninety percent of the people that I know who was over fifty-five are still working, all right? And they leave whenever their work schedule is, and they will add to the traffic. The additional traffic would not be good for Elwood Road and the surrounding roads. Two entrances are access that have no traffic lights, and if a traffic light was installed, it would cause more of a traffic backup. So I have to say this afternoon, thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Lee Isler. On deck will be Michael McCarthy. Lee, can you kindly spell your last name, and you have three minutes, sir?
Hi, my name's Lee Isler, I-T-Z-L-E-R. I live several hundred feet away from this proposed rezoning, and I'd like to give you some firsthand observations of what it's like to live on Elwood Road right now. Trying to get out of my driveway to take my children to school is nearly impossible until you get a kind heart that will let you in. When you add all these additional cars to Elwood Road, I don't know how people are going to ever get out of their driveways, let alone where they actually need to be. The dairy was a horrible neighbor. I was very much on the case about getting the smells taken care of. Finally, we had to appeal to the Department of Health of Suffolk County, who did take care of the issue. But fortunately, they're gone. It's been documented, they're out of business, they're not coming back. Fantastic. Any comparisons in the report that I read of traffic or smells or industrial use of this light are invalid, because they're gone. It's past history. As Walter stated, the emergency services in our community are strained already. I can't imagine, with all these seniors and their additional health issues, what is the community going to do about all that? Traffic mediation, as far as adding state-of-the-art systems? Well, Oaktree Dairy like to use that word, state-of-the-art, very much about their sewer treatment plan. Unfortunately, their idea of state-of-the-art wasn't really anything. It was open cesspools. So if you want to know about the traffic situation, what a state-of-the-art could do, try to make a left-hand turn heading north on Elwood Road from Jervis Turnpike, where the cars are backed up way down two-thirty-one. It's nearly impossible. Already residents are taking all the shortcuts to avoid that light. So that's what it's like to be a resident on Elwood Road. I love it there. I want to stay there for a very long time. I'd like to remain zoned as is, and that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time, sir. Mr. McCarthy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the Commission. Mr. Krieger is going to yield his three minutes to me, if that's okay?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Krieger. Spell your last name for the record.
Stephen Krieger, K-R-I-E-G-E-R.
Okay. Then Mr. McCarthy, you're recognized for six minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Michael McCarthy, M-C-C-A-R-T-H-Y, of the law firm of McCarthy and Reynolds, Seventy Scarter Street, Huntington. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, BK Elwood, actually coordinated the filing of the zone change application, which is under review by the Town of Huntington. I do have a few remarks regarding the project itself, but I thought maybe it would be best that I start with maybe countering some of the remarks that I made this morning, or should say this afternoon, specifically, legislator Stern. You know, my colleague, Mr. Stern, I respectfully disagree with his characterization as to the limited nature of the review that has been undergone to date with respect to the Seasons at Elwood, filed by BK Elwood. The environmental assessment form, the expanded environmental assessment form, the traffic impact analysis, the data, the demographics, the studies, if you looked at it in print form, it's about two volumes of the Manhattan Telephone Directorate. That environmental assessment form, expanded EAF with traffic data, has been coordinated with all of the involved agencies in the Town of Huntington, all of the involved agencies that are in the Town of Huntington, and all of the involved agencies of Suffolk County, including the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, Suffolk County Planning Commission, Suffolk County Department of Health Services. I don't think that anyone can seriously debate that the matter has not been reviewed. These plans and reports have been prepared by individuals who are recognized as the best and brightest in their fields in Suffolk County, and again, comprehensive in nature, detailed analysis. Now, we can disagree as to what the running approach is with respect to the property. We feel that we've got the correct plan, but I think it's unfair to indicate that anyone in the Suffolk County Planning Commission, Mr. Fraley, that did not have a lot of information upon which to base his report. So I take issue with that. Secondly, with respect to Mr. McCarthy, no relationship to me, but my colleague, who's representing the school district, fine gentleman that he is, good last name, I have been quoted as saying it's a little bit of a head-scratcher to me that an age-restricted community, such as the Seasons at Elwood and the zoning classification we seek, would be opposed by the school district. This project is clearly going to be a large generator of taxes, first and foremost, without any commensurate impact on school-aged children. Now, we can have a discussion about the traffic on Elwood Road, and what happens when the condominiums are constructed, and the impact upon, you know, the buses coming into the project. That's a fair conversation to have. But clearly, though, the development, just from an economic standpoint, is a generator, it's a boon to the Elwood community, the Elwood School District. That property today generates about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in taxes, about a hundred thousand of which go to the Elwood School District, and I'm just using general terms. Our well-documented studies show that it'll generate clearly up to about three million dollars in taxes, two million of which will go back to the school district. So, you know, we were a little bit funneled by that conversation, and again, nobody is more concerned about, obviously, the children than the school district, but, you know, as a responsible developer, as neighbors we are too. Which leads to the third point regarding traffic impact analyses. Robert Ashbacher, who we're more familiar with his good work in Suffolk County, was commissioned to prepare not only one traffic count, but two traffic counts, which we did... commissioned to prepare not only one traffic count, but two traffic counts, which we did supply in detail. For the original plan, which I might add, was filed seeking four hundred units, two units, then scaled back to four hundred forty-four units, and now at three hundred sixty units. And that traffic impact analysis indicated that with a million dollars of expenditures that BK Elwood has agreed to make, they can synchronize the lights on Elwood Road, add turning lanes that aren't there presently, and in fact, when the Seasons was first envisioned, we contemplated a traffic signal where Hammond Road is, at the entrance. And you know what? Because the traffic impacts anticipated to be associated with the Seasons at Elwood are so imperceptible in relationship to what goes on on Elwood Road, the information that came back to us, or to Mr. Eschbacher, was that a traffic signal would not be permitted because there wasn't enough traffic to warrant it. So we revised the plan to show an entrance and exit, main entrance above, across from Hammond Road, and a secondary means of ingress and egress on the north end. So again, these have been studied at length and are still under review by the town and the county, well, well documented. And in fact, the developer just, you know, paid for the town of Huntington to commission yet a third traffic count, the study of which we have not been made privy to, but I need to believe that those counts and those information is very comparable. Now, back to the project at hand, though, because I think it's important to underscore, this is a thirty-seven acre piece of property. I'm born and raised in Huntington. You know, nineteen sixty-one, I'm not here as long as Rich Ward, but fifty-two years, okay? And I'm very, very familiar with this piece of property. It's the old Oak Tree Farm Dairy Processing Plant. I can tell you that as a young assistant town attorney in Huntington, the complaints about the odors and the trucks and the noise was legion. It's an opportunity to get rid of the quintessential non-conforming use and put it to a development perspective that comports with the town of Huntington's comprehensive plan. The town of Huntington's comprehensive plan indicates that senior housing is much, much needed in Huntington. It's twenty-eight percent of the demographic in Huntington, and yet only three percent of housing in Huntington is dedicated to senior housing. But what the comprehensive plan also says is that attention should be paid to old industrial properties, such as the Oak Tree Farm Dairy, with a view towards redevelopment for different housing choices, such as the Seasons at Elwood. So I can assure this board that everything that's being proposed is being studied and comports with not only the comprehensive plan, but also the tried-and-true, recognized retirement residential district in Huntington. These same discussions that you're hearing now were considered by this commission when the Greens was contemplated, when Palmernoch Village was contemplated. So again, it's a much-needed housing choice. Thirty-seven acre piece of property, we're contemplating three hundred sixty units. Under the RRM code, the code provides fourteen point three units to the acre.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much. So I would hope that you carefully consider what we presented, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Loretta Hammond?
My name is Loretta Hammond.
Spell that for the record. Ma'am, sorry about that.
My last is H-A-M-A-N-N.
Thank you.
I'm a homeowner in Elwood for forty-one years. I'm vice president of the Elwood Taxpayers Association. The Elwood Taxpayers Association membership is approximately four hundred families. We have polled our members at regular meetings, and the majority are not in favor of the downzoning of the Oak Tree Dairy property. I hate to bore you again, but I'm also going to address the issue of traffic on Elwood Road. I know there are many concerns, but one of the big concerns is the traffic on Elwood Road. The traffic study was done by the builder, and the results of the report were not trusted, and the town ordered another traffic study. Coming from someone who lives on Elwood Road, directly across from the proposed development, no one knows about the traffic better than I do. I'm living there forty-one years. I've seen the great change over the forty-one years. The recommendation by you that they should provide convenient transportation to mass transit and medical facilities, et cetera, and the additional cars which will be generated by the residents from the Seasons at Elwood will only exacerbate the already heavy traffic. Elwood Road is a main traffic thoroughfare for the Elwood community, as well as people traveling north and south between Jericho Turnpike and 25A. A more comprehensive study must be conducted to understand and address the impact of the proposed project, which also affects the school district's safety. Based on the information submitted, I do not feel this commission has sufficient information to render a decision regarding the zone change at this time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Next, we have Ralph Rizzuto.
I'm giving my time to Janice Lewis.
Ms. Lewis? You are recognized for six minutes. Please just spell your last name for the record.
Thank you. I am Janice Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. Good afternoon, Suffolk County Planning Commission members. I am Janice Lewis, and I object to the proposed downzoning of the Oak Tree Dairy property. I have been an Elwood resident for forty years. A consulting group was commissioned by the Huntington Town Board. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let me know that you mean, well, a consultant group. Worse?
You have to actually hold the button, actually. Christine, could you help?
Oh.
I believe that one you have to hold, so.
Oh, oh, okay. Very good. Thank you. A consulting group was commissioned by the Huntington Town Board, and its recommendation was that these thirty-seven acres be zoned one residence to an acre because of infrastructure concerns, one of them being traffic on a two-lane highway that is a north-south route from many surrounding communities. This high-density community of three hundred sixty condos on thirty-seven acres will bring an estimated additional five hundred forty cars, and you can expect that these three hundred sixty families will have at least two hundred cars coming with visitors and people providing services to them. That is a daily total of fourteen hundred and eighty additional cars going and coming on Elwood Road. Each car uses up twenty-two feet of road space, which equals thirty-two thousand five hundred and sixty feet, which is slightly more than six miles of bumper-to-bumper traffic. To put it into perspective, that is three times the distance of Elwood Road from Jericho Turnpike to Clay Pitts Road. Elwood Road is only one point eight miles between those two intersections. The only conclusion that can be reached is to say no to this requested downzoning. If this property is to be developed as a senior citizen community, then let us come to a compromise and make it really suitable for senior citizens to live there for as long as they wish. To accomplish this, envision three ranch homes to an acre. Each home would be easily accessible by wheelchair. All doorways and hallways in the home would be accommodating to large wheelchairs. The home would have two bedrooms, two cold bathrooms, and a two-car garage. The main bathroom would be totally handicapped, accessible to a person in a wheelchair. It would be spacious enough for an attendant to assist the senior citizen. If a third bedroom is needed for a living attendant, half the garage space could be converted to a third bedroom. An assisted living facility costs over $4,000 a month. A nursing home can cost $12,000 to $15,000 a month. Two paid people sharing the cost of attending in their own home would cost far less, and they would have the pleasure of living at home. Quality of life would be better because each home would have a deck that could be reached by a wheelchair from the bedroom and living room. There would be privacy because no two-story condo would be opposite them. There would be just another ranch home on the other side of the fence. There would be yard space to entertain family and friends and have a garden. Three ranch homes to an acre designed for the handicap is how this property should be developed. The town board would demonstrate it that is more closely conforming to the master plan, which was against high-density development of this property, and also taking the concerns of the community into account. The surrounding community would not see their neighborhood radically change in appearance, and the roads could handle the increased traffic that this much smaller development would produce. It is doubtful that young families would buy these homes because they design for the physically handicapped senior citizen, so there would not be school-aged children entering the school system, which concerns so many community members who are already paying very high property taxes. The owners who wish to sell their property would find little resistance to this type of development, and they would have their names praised for leaving the area in better condition than they found it. A good name is a priceless possession. In addition, since much has been said by the developer about separating parents, grandparents, from their children and grandchildren, this should be examined more closely. Picture this: as a homeowner on a third of an acre, a grandfather can invite his grandchildren over to pick ripe tomatoes from the plants they put in the garden in the spring. Can the condo owner do that? The answer is no. There's no front yard or backyard. Can a condo owner invite the family over for a barbecue and/or a badminton game in the backyard? The answer is no. Living on the second floor of a condo limits you to a small space, and on the ground floor you only have patio space enough to accommodate a seat four people. The homeowner can invite the family over to enjoy swimming against the wave in his endless pool. He doesn't share his pool with three hundred sixty other condo owners, nor does he pay homeowners' association fees. The condo owner can say this: the homeowner has no need for a country club provided by the developer, because he has his own private country club in his own backyard, which he enjoys with family and friends. If you want to interfere with senior citizens' relationships with their children and grandchildren, then put them in a condo so they have no activity they can enjoy together, which stimulates conversation, laughter, and makes for happy memories. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Elwood. Nancy of John Mende, from Councilman Cook.
Hi, Paula. That's all right. You can spell your name.
Spell your name for the record.
Nendez, N-E-N-D-E-S. I'm here today to represent Huntington Town Councilwoman Eugene Cook, COOK. Councilwoman Cook would like to address some concerns to the Suffolk County Planning Commission regarding the BK Elwood application. At the town of Huntington, June seventeenth, public hearing regarding the Seasons at Elwood zoning change there over a hundred speakers. For the community membership came out, the majority were in favor of this zone change. The reasons we heard...
Hold the button. You have to hold it.
Yeah, it's a pain. The reasons we heard are...
Hold the button.
The reasons we heard that are most supportive of the facts on why this property's zone change should not change are environmental reasons. County Executive Stephen Malone has stated Suffolk County has to reconsider the density rates that we are building at because of the effects on our aquifers. Three hundred and sixty units compared to the approximately thirty-two homes that the property is currently zoned for, I am sure is what County Executive Malone is referring to. The effects of the increase in high-density housing is having on our aquifers will not be easy to reverse, if reversible at all. For an island that's surrounded by waters, our aquifers are a precious asset that we need to protect for the survival of future generations. An additional concern regarding this development is the contamination to the ground. The builder's own report states the land is contaminated with heavy metals and four four DDT. What are the risks to the groundwater? What about the safety of the schoolchildren attending John Glenn Elwood Middle School and James Boyden Junior? What will the airborne contaminants do to the growing, developing minds and bodies of these children? Councilwoman Cook's ex of planning board and the Suffolk County Department of Health to weigh these concerns before issuing approval of this plan, as summarized by the American Planning Association. Planning is a dynamic profession that works to improve the well-being of people and their communities by creating more convenient, equitable, helpful, efficient, and attractive places for present and future generations. Our water is a vital asset required for future generations. Councilwoman Cook, thank you for your time, and is greatly appreciated. He has asked the developer and the community to continue to communicate and see if they could come down to a lower density that everyone could support.
Thank you, Ms. Nendez, and please give her regards to Councilman Cook.
I will. Thank you.
Joseph Caruso.
My name is Joe Caruso. I reside here since nineteen seventy-six. Been involved in the community all that time. Oak Tree Dairy goes back a long time, always. If it's zone one acre zoning, okay, it exists. Of course, there was a small cow farm where they had a little bottle of planted, bottle milk for, or milkman. So was they sold to Cosmin, and that's where Oak Tree Dairy started, and they started the dairy farm, okay? They've been a problem all these years, okay? I got a list of different things submitted, there's those paper articles and different things that went to court, and there's not enough time to go through the whole thing. I've been through with all that. I've been the lead person, even with the ZBA, okay? I feel should the zoning exist today should stand firm. This is a commitment to the community. If there is going to be a change, it should be for the benefit of the community. And who proposes should be telling the truth? When they talk about helping seniors, they're not telling you the units they're talking about is seven hundred thousand dollars. That's not affordable. That ain't helping me. My house is worth four hundred and fifty thousand. What am I going to take a mortgage for another? Two hundred and fifty thousand to one day unit? That's going to help me? It's going to help my neighbor? No, it isn't. So all this thing is false, okay? It is crazy. How, Northwood is having problems with the sewer treatment plant. How are these residents, the three hundred sixty seniors, going to run a sewer treatment plant in their rural community? Sure, it's good for the next five years, but what happens there when they have to spend a couple of million dollars to redo it, okay? That's what it says to them. They talk about the Greens. Well, the Greens, if you talk about the people of Greens, they got big, big problems in the Greens. Nobody's happy with the Greens. So, you know, the only thing the community is asking, keep the zoning as is. If the Oak Tree Dairy wants to sell it, they have to sell it with one acre zoning, okay? If we get a new developer wants to come in, presents a new proposal that is acceptable to the community, maybe we'll consider, you know, supporting that program. But right now, ninety percent of the community says no. They even got people to sign a special date around that they need a supermajority to even pass this thing. They need, the town needs four votes, not three.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate that.
I'll leave some stuff for you guys.
You can give it to the...
If you have any questions, give me a call.
Thank you. You can give it to the staff right here. Next, we have Ed McNally and Sherri McNally. Since I'm a guest, you two are related, I'll let you figure out who should go first.
We're lucky both of us.
All right, there you go. McNally, you're recognized for three minutes. Just spell your last name for the record.
M-C-N-A-L-L-Y. Another Nick. My name is Ed McNally, as I said, and I was born in Manhattan, and I was raised in Queens. And I was stationed when I was in the Navy up here in New London, but I'm in love with this area. And I only dreamed about having a house like I have in Elwood. I live on Elkar Tribe and Elliott, and it's always been a quaint neighborhood, and still is. But when I see what the builder is proposing here, it flashes back to where I lived in Queens and what it's like, and that's where I moved away from. And I don't think that this would enhance anything in this area, because it reminds me of where I moved away from. But a few things I wanted to address. They said that this is in character with what Elwood is. This is an example from something, the Seasons of Elwood, that they're going to build, but you'll notice that there's no others like it around in this rendering. Picture this on Elwood Road. This, to me, looks like three stories high, over thirty feet. There's nothing in Elwood that's a character that you can characterize like this. The traffic, which everybody has spoke about. Well, I'm retired from the City University of New York, and I commuted from Elwood since nineteen seventy-five to Bayside, and I can tell you personally what the traffic's like. You can't get off of 231 East Deer Park Road onto Jericho because there's so much traffic going north on Elwood Road. In the building here, if they have three hundred sixty units and you have only two new people living in there... It's the same. I have come out onto Elwood Road from Elchester and sometimes you sit there through the light changes three or four times because you can't get out. It's already dense. Traffic lights not going to solve it. It's presently one-acre zoning. And I feel that it's not down zoning. I think that's a bad term. This is overpopulation. It's too much. There's been studies reflecting the problems with the fish and the shellfish in the water around here. The builder says they're going to put in a state-of-the-art septic system and it was going to lower the nitrogen going into the ground. But what are they using and what are they putting into the ground to get to that situation? Is it hazardous? Is it a hazmat situation? What if there was a catastrophe where if the system failed and all these people, the human waste going into the ground? Who's going to attend to that? I had even proposed that, at one point, that there's some fears about how it would affect the school district. And I said to the builder, I said, would you be willing to put $2 million in an escrow earning account just in case there was a problem?
Your time has expired, but you talked to your wife about... Oh, she's got... Oh, all right. I think you're done and she's up.
Yeah.
All right.
My name is, they spell it the same way as his.
Good enough. I think you have three minutes.
N-A-L-L-Y. The response we got from the builder is, no way. He just flatly said, no way, we will not put away any money, even though we are 100% certain that this will not increase the children to your school district. So, in listening to the builder, one of the first meetings we went to, he gave a traffic study. He had it up on a screen where we could see it. There was not one car shown. Anyone who's been on Elwood Road, I don't care, maybe it was a holiday season, maybe it was at dawn, but this is the type of study and the type of proposals they have been giving us. Nothing that we can really say. This is an honest presentation from the builder. Most of his presentations have been very misguided, misleading, nothing to the truth that we could say, yes, we can trust this builder and we feel confident that he's going to do for us what needs to be done. We have been also not invited to meetings. He said he has invited us to meetings, he has not. Meetings that one of our presidents went to go, they said, what are you doing here? And made him sign a note before he was able to sit and listen. So I don't think they are listening to us. We went out on Elwood Road a few weeks ago, us people, the community, our own time, not paid to do this, and we received 4,000 signatures on our petition from people from the community, the people who live here in Elwood, who go to school there, their kids go there and work there, people from Northport stopped and signed up petitions, people from Ashropin, we support you. What more can be done on Elwood Road to stop the traffic or to help the traffic? Not much. We have to be careful. My greatest fear is, we need open space. If you downzone this, who next is going to say, hey, you did it on Elwood, there's a piece of property over here, I want to put 13 houses on that two acres. Where does it stop? Horizon 2020 said, downzoning is not what we need. I am a senior citizen. Believe me, I am not against senior citizens. I am about responsibility. Build something that we can all use, not something that's going to destroy our community. I was raised in New Hampshire, moved to New York, met my husband, wanted to live like I did in New Hampshire. We came to Elwood 38 years ago. I am so happy and pleased to be here. Please listen to your community. Our community does not want it. 4,000 signatures, people on their own, none being paid. This is what we got. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Lisa Pollessi.
Hi, Pollessi, P-O-L-E-S-I. Hello, my name is Lisa Pollessi and I'm a resident of Elwood. Thank you for allowing us to speak today. It is my understanding that part of the planning commission's job is to review site plans and zoning actions meeting certain jurisdictional requirements such as within 500 feet of county or state roads, municipal boundaries, and/or estruaries, as well as recommendations, recommend land use and planning policies to Suffolk towns and villages. In order for this commission to accomplish this competently and with integrity, they must see all sides of an issue and be fully informed, which is the small amount of skewed information given to this commission by those that sit on the town board who have accepted a tremendous amount of campaign contributions from the Engel Berman, this cannot be possible. You do not have all the facts pertinent to the downzone as a landing question. I would hope that this commission had the integrity to seek out all the facts before rendering a decision on a project that over 4,000 informed people have expressed their opposition to. There are so many reasons why this downzoning is a horrible idea and not enough time for me to convey here, so I refer to one very important piece of the puzzle. The Elwood area of Huntington has some of the highest levels of nitrogen found in groundwater throughout Suffolk County. The county executive, Steve Malone, has stated publicly that water quality is the biggest challenge of his administration. It makes little sense for the county to support a change of zone application, which will result in more nitrogen being contributed to groundwater than as of right development of single-family homes. It would therefore be prudent for the county and the town to limit the density of development in order to reduce the amount of nitrogen contributed to groundwater, rather than approving a development that will only make the current situation worse. Please, think twice before sending a recommendation over to the town of Huntington. Remember what your job is and who you work for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Kim Cameron.
Good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Cameron, C-A-M-E-R-O-N, from Preserving Elwood Now. The entire Elwood community has been working to preserve the quality of life in concert to the 4,000 single-family homes in the Elwood Public School District. The Elwood community is against the rezoning application of Oak Tree Dairy property by the Engel Berman Group. The Elwood School Board, all five PTA groups within the Elwood School District, the Elwood Taxpayers Association, Green Lawn Civic Group, Preserving Elwood Now, Manor Plain Civic Group, and the Greater Huntington Civic Group are all against the rezoning application by BK Elwood, the Engel Berman Group. What is not mentioned in today's Suffolk County staff report for consideration regarding the prominent zone change is the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, the SECR report by Engel Berman. By Engel Berman's own SECR submission, the most discerning findings is the containment of soil, the presence of heavy metals including arsenic, 4, and DDT. As mentioned, this property borders the Elwood Middle School, John Glenn High School, a farmer, and all single-family homes. Unlike documents submitted to Suffolk County, there is no other industrial use next to or anywhere subsequent to the property. The Engel Berman Group has failed to put forth a suitable remediation plan to ensure the safety, health, and well-being of school-aged children and community residents. According to the FDA, DDT is a known carcinogen. DDT also causes neurodevelopmental disabilities in children, including autism and hyperactivity disorder. According to the CDC reports, autism is a disability impacting one out of 68 children today. Elwood's schoolchildren are already an example of these statistics. DDT poses a threat to pregnant women. It is shown that DDT can cause genetic mutation in fetuses as mothers' exposure to this environmental toxin increases. Current research by the CDC states elderly patients with levels of DDT and DDE in the blood are four times more likely to be diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. Chemical toxins are a tremendous environmental concern which has not been addressed by the applicant BK Elwood, the Engel Berman Group. I ask the Suffolk County Planning Board, I ask you, please take these findings, read the SECR study, reconsider your recommendation to rezone the Oak Tree Dairy property. These toxins are hazardous to the children and adults who live there. Therefore, this is not just a simple zone change. This is a health risk to our children, this is a health risk to our community, and a health risk to our residents. It is your responsibility under state and county law to review these site plans, zoning actions which ensure the safety of people in Suffolk County, and I ask that you maintain your mission in its entirety. In regards to the mention of school-aged children, through the Freedom of Information Act, we have proof that there are school-aged children residing in both seasons properties in East Meadow and in Plainview. This has been verified by the Elwood School Board. School taxes controlled by the budget must be passed in May. The school children, the school district will not get any additional revenue above the school budget. That is simply illegal. Also, federal law and McKinney-Vento legislation says that you cannot discriminate against children in housing. It costs $18,000 to educate one child in the Elwood Schools, $60,000 for one additional bus. Think of how many school-aged children will reside in a property that has 360 condominium units. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron. Holly Gioe.
I want to submit the letter, if this has not yet been submitted or has been submitted, I'm not sure, but I'll pass. And all proof and research. Hello, my name is Holly Gioe, spelled G-I-O-E-I. I am an Elwood resident and I oppose this project. I'd like to thank Mr. McCarthy for actually having changed my statement because it really becomes this simple. If 3% is currently dedicated to senior housing in Huntington, how and why can one rezone one small piece of land to disproportionately burden Elwood to grow our population by over 50% of resident addresses to be dedicated to senior housing? It just doesn't make sense. I have three major concerns. Number one is the environmental, which was already discussed in great detail, the water issues along with that. Number two, the aesthetics of Elwood, this is not in keeping with Elwood as others have previously said, and senior housing is not needed at this time in this location at this high of density. Why is there such a need for senior living? Migration is due to cost and taxes, not due to lack of senior living options. It is well documented that Long Island populations are going down. It's not because seniors are leaving, it's because our young people are leaving with their families and thus the seniors are leaving to follow their children and their grandchildren. So the idea that this cost and taxes are going to add to help us is simply ridiculous. Their own Horizons report stated that this needs to go on a manufactured plant on a major road, which Elwood is not. I'm not going to speak, as many of my neighbors do, about the traffic problems that this will create because I actually frankly think that Elwood Road already, oh, I was going to use a bad word, Elwood Road is already a problem and it's going to continue being a problem. So as far as the impact, when something already stinks, it will continue to stink. Right now, they say that this is affordable housing. I have a problem with that. Maybe my idea of affordable is different than theirs, although according to Obama, I am in the 1%, which on Long Island isn't the same 1%. But my feeling is this, if you're going to have seniors live in housing at $650,000 and burden them with HOA fees and taxes that come close to $16,000, it will be very similar to the Port Washington project, which is currently not selling. These homes will sit there, if it is at this high density, it will be turned into something else, which is again not keeping in the aesthetics of Elwood. I agree with some of my counterparts that say that maybe some downsizing and a compromise can be reached. When we asked the developer to change from 400 and somewhat number and he was so gracious and came down to 377, that wasn't the compromise we were looking for. We were looking for something that was going to be in the aesthetics of Elwood. Single-family homes, possibly like the EL section, which is a third of an acre zoning or half-acre zoning. I live across the street and I think that that would be a very fair compromise.
Your time has expired, but thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Darren Berger. About open space, no? Darren? Okay. And Pam Schiel.
Pam, you can just spell your last name for the record and then you have three minutes. Schiel, S-C-H-I-E-L. I want to bring to your attention the water situation and this area. If you look at the USGS Water Table contours, contour maps, the limit of the McAfee Aquifer in the Huntington area is shorter than in the other coastal areas along the north shore of Long Island. When you combine that with the Lloyd Aquifer case from 2007 for the well drilling of, on Middle Hill Road and all that was brought out there regarding the situation with the water supply, it's pretty evident that we have a water problem in this particular corridor. I will give you this copy of my correspondence to the town about this and also the excerpt from the Seasons' expanded environmental assessment form, which cut and pasts, as the whole report does, a map from the Suffolk County Soil Survey. Of course, they neglect to include that the upper portion of this proposed site is also, you know, Haven loom. Nevertheless, Haven loom is difficult to put sanitary sewage disposal in because it's a possible hazard and it has severe limitations, as does the Montauk silt loom, which is in the lower part of this proposed site. I'll give you that also. I'd also like to bring your attention to an article, or an essay I should say, by Chelsea Wood entitled "Wastewater Reclamation and Groundwater Recharge for a Soul-Source Aquifer", which goes into the problems of how packaged sewage treatment plants that contend to recharge the aquifer with its effluent poses serious problems, probably more serious than nitrogen. The trihalo-methanes that occur from this kind of recharge is explained in this essay, which I will give you. So a packaged sewage treatment plant is not a good idea at all in this area. I also want to bring to your attention that the BK Elwood application, BK Elwood is merely another entity under the Engel Berman umbrella, and Engel Berman has already wreaked some havoc in Huntington with its Bristol assisted-living property in East Northport. It's misrepresented in all the town records and the town just went through a resolution about how difficult blighted properties are for code and safety issues. Well, it's similar for the Bristol in Elwood, in East Northport.
Thank you, ma'am, for being here. Appreciate you, your time. Any others wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to the chair report. I'll keep this brief in light of the hour. We had a couple of things I've been in the commission about on agriculture. Following up on the breakfast we did in East Hampton with Town Supervisor Larry Cantwell and Congressman Bishop, we have two new initiatives in the work on agriculture. One, we put together with the Farm Bureau and the Connaught Land Trust, an application, as well as the Malone administration, an application to the state for a new fund that would help farmers finance capital equipment they need to get started, like tractors, et cetera. We got that proposal done in two weeks, so I want to thank Oki Ruck, the chef in the County Executive's Office for all his work on it, as well as our partners in the Farm Bureau, Connaught Land Trust, et cetera. Also want to thank Barbara and Carl for their work on that. In addition, another thing we're focusing on is the education for agriculture and the County Executive's Office is moving on that and Carl Gabrielson's been involved in those meetings on behalf of the Planning Commission. Carl, is there anything new to update the commission on in those meetings?
No, we're actually, we're going to meet this month with Bosie's and some of the school supervisors from Riverhead and Wyandotte, among others. And I'm working with Oki, we're going to try to get, you know, Cornell and local farmers, Farm Darrow, involved so we can...
In addition, another thing we're focusing on is the education for agriculture, and the County Executive's Office is moving on that, and Carl Gabrielson's been involved in those meetings on behalf of the Planning Commission. Carl, anything new to update the Commission on in those meetings?
No, we're actually -- we're going to meet this month with Bosie's and some of the school supervisors from Riverhead and Wyandotte, among others. And I'm working with Oggy. We're going to try to get, you know, Cornell and local farmers, farm dero involved, so we can kind of have a coordinated effort, you know, get this whole thing off the ground. A lot of the school districts around, they want to grow, have students grow food for the school, which is an interesting concept, you know. It's a great way to introduce kids to farming, you know. So we're working on that. We should have a meeting that's coming up.
Great. You'll -- as you all know, this is two big issues we have with agriculture. One, people can't afford to get into the field. Two, we need more people, younger folks particularly interested in the field, and these two efforts we have are aimed at capitalizing both of those. On the housing front, as you know, we are looking to improve the housing data that we collect as a county, working with Libby and others who've come up with a plan to start collecting on an annual basis better regional housing data, so we can have better regional housing strategies and goals. We'll probably need your help with the various towns. Andy and I are actually meeting after this meeting to discuss some of the rubric of what we're going to ask the towns for. If anyone wants to stay to meet with us as we start just that effort, please feel free to stay after the meeting. We have our economic -- the Suffolk County Economic Development Conference, which as you know is a joint effort between this Planning Commission and the Suffolk IDA. We're moving forward with that. It'll clean out probably October. It looks like Cannon is willing to host that event at their U.S. headquarters in Belleville, and Barbara Roberts and I are going to be working on that agenda, along with Anthony Manetta and Juan Mignieri from the County Executive's Office. So we're excited about that. It looks like October. As you know, I was hoping to get this in before the summer started, but it didn't work out time-wise. On the geothermal code, I know I've mentioned that a few times. We have circulated the model geothermal code for the towns to some of the key stakeholders. We've got some comments back. We're waiting to hear back from the industry. They tell me it's going to be right after 4th of July. They'll bet their comments back to us, and I would hope to bring it to the this commission for consideration at our August meeting, so we can send it out to the towns for their consideration after that. We also have the childcare report. Jennifer Casey was the representative of the Planning Commission on the Suffolk County Welfare to Work Task Force's Childcare Report. Jennifer, thank you for your service on that. I know you're just going to give a quick update of the commission on that report, which just came out.
Yes. Here's a -- I have a couple of copies of it. It's called "Who's Minding the Kids: Meeting Challenges and Creating Opportunities for Quality Childcare and Early Learning in Suffolk County." There was a task force put together by the Welfare to Work Commission, which I assisted in. It was headed by Kathy LaGore, and they did an amazing amount of work. I went to a couple of meetings, but it was just a lot of real experts on the issue got together on a regular basis to put this report together. It was adopted on June 6, 2014. It kind of started from President Barack Obama's call in his 2013 State of the Union message for preschool educational initiatives stimulating already -- I'm quoting from this, because this is where they all -- where it came from. "A vibrant national discussion about what America is doing to care for and educate children prior to their entering kindergarten or first grade." This was an issue I was very passionate about. I have a daughter now in grade second grade, and I was faced with a lot of challenges when she entered kindergarten, because the Huntington School District had been full day and went down to a half-day, and it really created a lot of challenges for me. And I actually testified at the hearing. You get to read my testimony in the report, and I just kind of commented on that, and how it forced my husband and I to put our daughter into private school, because we needed childcare, because we're both full-time working professionals. And it's kind of interesting hearing all this conversation about elderly people and housing, because my own mother and my stepfather are moving to Florida because they can't afford to stay on Long Island, which causes more childcare challenges for me as my daughter ages, but it shows what a problem childcare and even housing for the elderly is very linked in the big scheme of things. Part of when they wanted to do these hearings, they had a couple of goals, that it was to tell the stories of how working families really struggle. I mean, people that are making a lot less money than I am, the struggles that they go through trying to get portal childcare is unbelievable. They wanted to define the modalities of quality childcare in Suffolk County, and document the importance and impacts of quality early childhood learning, the need for quality childcare in Suffolk County. There are a lot of issues that they wanted to look at. In New York State right now, you don't need -- there's -- only in New York City is kindergarten mandated, in the other counties it's not, and that's a real big problem, because as we've seen, districts have gone down to half-day, some have gone back up to full-day, but there's no reason why a district can't do away with kindergarten altogether. We've heard a lot in the news about the city of New York wanting to have early, you know, preschool childcare, but I think we have to look at it all in a big combination. So the conclusions of the report were that Suffolk County needs to create a Suffolk County Childcare and Early Learning Commission that will be charged with creating data repository on the status of childcare and early learning, to pilot testing a school district's shared service model coordinating childcare with the county's economic development plans, to continue to advocate with the OCFS for change in the CCVG formula that underfunds Suffolk's demand for childcare for families, to allocate county funds for childcare with emphasis on expanding the number of children in working poor families who can receive childcare subsidies, to use a company support for childcare as a criterion for awarding Suffolk industrial development grants, and to establish a Suffolk County Children's Trust Fund through which individuals and corporations would be awarded tax incentives for contributing to this fund to help with this childcare issue. It's a really big issue. It's very hard to take care of. It's not -- there's no easy solution to deal with this problem, but I think it's very important to provide quality childcare for our young children, and the education component is so important. I mean, they're the foundation of what will be leading our country, our country and our county in the future, so if we don't take care of them when they're young, they're not going to be able to do anything when they get older. So I think it's a really important issue for us.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thanks for your leadership and being part of that group. Any questions? Seeing none, I know we emailed around to the Commission members, the electronic version, but we do have a couple printed copies if folks are interested, and particularly as we look to finishing up the comprehensive plan for the counties this year, we look at sort of critical issues for Suffolk County going forward with childcare. That would be one of them, as Jennifer said, from an educational perspective, as well as an economic development perspective, to allow parents to be part of the workforce if they choose to be. So thank you, Jennifer. A couple last things for all of you. Projects that we had come through this commission that moved forward this month, the New Village Ribbon Cutting was in Patchogue last week. Both myself and Vice Chair Esposito were there, as well as Commissioner Kelly, Mike Kelly, and certainly a big day for Patchogue and for that project. Also, another project that we had reviewed just recently was the Roncoffama Hub, which the Cape Town Town Board did approve the renewal plan for just last week. Want to thank Commissioner Matt Chartrand, who had to leave, but he participated with me in the June 16 event at the Northport Library, focusing on stormwater runoff and green methodologies for stormwater runoff. I was actually hosted by CCE, Citizens Campaign for the Environment. We were happy to support it, and both Matt and I were there on behalf of the commission. We spoke about this commission's guidelines on that, educating developers and the towns about the county guidelines on stormwater runoff. We have the -- our next meeting will be here in Hopoff on August 6 at 2 o'clock, as per our annual schedule. We're going to need to do that here at the Legislature, or possibly over at the Suffolk County Water Authority. We'll get back to you and let you know in the next couple of weeks on that. Finally, for those of you who have not finished visiting, the couple of stores in your area were fertilizer sold, as remember you've got packets, and were asked to go check in on some stores. I know I've done one of my three, so I'm guilty, but the next couple of weeks, we do want to finish that project. So please finish that and email the results to Sarah and the planning staff. Well, see, as Chair, you get to dole them out, so it's a --
Did you have a badge?
Anyway, any questions about that? If not, Andy, I know you have a brief update from the staff, and then let's get into the staff, the administrative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, Director Lansdale apologizes for not being able to speak here, but you did send me a couple of things to relay to you. The staff wanted to thank the commission members for their participation in the IBM Smarter Cities Challenge. We know that they're wrapping that up, and they've given some preliminary reports on that, and that should be completed soon. Also, as the Chair mentioned, Sarah just wanted to remind the commission members to submit their findings for the fertilizer survey. Also, the commission should be aware that the county is accepting film submissions for the Crap Shoot Film Contest through August 1. Sarah wanted to indicate that the prizes include $1,000, first prize is $1,000, $500, and a weekend at the Shawman Preserve on Shelter Island are the other two prizes. And the director wanted to ask you to spread the word. Contest guidelines are online. The county also released an RFP, Request for Proposals for the Development of a Septic Education for Homeowners and Industry Professionals, and to oversee the Septic Demonstration Program. Sarah has briefed you on that, so we just wanted to let you know that the Request for Proposals has gone out for that. Also, you should know that Suffolk County submitted a $6 million grant application to the Long Island REDC through the CFA process for sewer-ing three targeted areas around the Carls River, the Forge River, and the Connect Heart River. That's to sewer approximately 18,500 parcels, and we made a presentation last week to the Infrastructure Committee and received positive feedback. Also, the Department would like to let you know that the Suffolk County TDR study has been submitted to HUD. It was well-received. We received a couple of calls for an awards nomination. There is some legislative interest in that. We're moving forward with that, trying to develop an implementation program, and we are seeking implementation grant funding to continue the project. And there will be a presentation to the Planning Commission upcoming. With regard to the comp plan, you should just know that we did put in an extension request for the proposed deadline for the project. We are working with the consultants towards revisions. And just for some stats from the Regulatory Review Unit that supports the commission, in June, the unit processed 143 total applications. The three applications before you today rose to your regional significance criteria. The rest of the referrals did receive local determinations with comments from staff, and all of those 143 referrals were returned to the local municipalities within 45 days or less. You should know that the 143 totals are up 13% from last month, and we are on a continuous trend upward.
Thank you, Andy. It'd be good to know if you can for next month. Thank for those stats, and I also want to thank you and the staff for reviewing 145 different applications to this commission. Would be good to know sort of the year-over-year numbers. Be interesting to see those as well, so what the previous month is -- sorry, that month the previous year is. So for next month, if you can have them available, that'd be interesting to see.
Sure.
So thank you for that. Questions about the staff report? Seeing none, why don't we go into the administrative agenda. The first item for the commission's consideration is the BK Elwood LLC application. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, as indicated, BK Elwood has been referred to us from the town of Huntington. Jurisdiction for the commission is that the subject property is adjacent to Elwood Road, which is County Road 10. The petitioners are seeking a change of zone approval from the Huntington Town Board for the construction of 360 age-restricted condominium units. The subject parcel is a 37.05 acre parcel zoned R-40, located on the west side of Elwood Road, north of Cuba Hill Road, in the hamlet of Elwood. The petitioners are requesting a change of zone on the entire parcel to residential senior citizen housing, R-RM. The proposed 360 condominium units are distributed in 56 two-story structures. The project is proposed to contain 66 affordable units, which is 18% of the total. The proposal -- I'm sorry, which is 18%. The proposal also includes a 17,000-square-foot recreation building, a dog-run tennis courts, and an outdoor two-swimming pool jacuzzi patio area. Other amenities include a walking path, naturalized areas, and an outdoor car wash location. The subject site is presently occupied by Oak Tree Farm Dairy, a pre-existing nonconforming use in the R-40 zoning district. The facility is a dairy product processing facility and trucking operation. All wastewater is to be treated on-site via a new sewage treatment plant. The proposal does include the removal of the existing STP, including existing wastewater treatment lagoons. I think I should have started with the photos that we have, and I just wanted to go through them, just so we can get a bearing on what we're looking at. So this is the -- up on the screen, this is the subject property outlined in red. You can see the predominant residential character of the area. You can see the schools up to the north and west, and the park is down to the south and the notch on the bottom part of that project.
Where's the driveway to the school?
The driveway into the school? Oh, is it up front?
Just north of the property.
We learned that the laser pointers don't work on the television screen, so we went back to last millennial's technology.
Yeah, that's a couple more.
Okay, next slide. All right, so that just zooms us in a little bit. Go ahead, next slide. We have an oblique view of the subject property. It shows, as you can see, the development of the buildings to the lower-left part of the slide. Those are those white structures there, various different buildings. You can see the wastewater treatment system in the upper-right, as well as the two lagoons. This is the zoning. You can see that zoning in the areas relatively simple. On the right side of Elwood Road, on the east side of Elwood Road, is zoned R-20, a minimum lot size 20,000 square feet. To the west side of Elwood Road is R-40, minimum lot size 40,000 square feet. This is the soils map, as shown. You can see the various different types of soils on the subject property. We'll talk about those in the staff report. Subject property in relation to the Elwood School District, roughly center of the district. This is the site plan for the subject property, conceptual site plan for the subject property related to the change of zone application. Next slide. This is a view on Elwood Road, looking south at the very edge of the subject property. So this is a view looking across the old pasture fields. Next slide. This is another view of that, looking a little bit more to the west. This is the entrance to the subject property. It was closed, so we did not get in, so that was the benefit of the oblique. You can see what was going on on-site, but you can see the character of some of the structures there. Next slide. These are some of the buildings that are no longer in use on the property. This is Elwood Road, looking north. Again, a character of Elwood Road, looking a little bit further north. Oh, I'm sorry, south. This would be around the block at the entrance to the town park. Again, a shot of the town park, looking back at the subject property from the west, looking east.
Andy, which park is that? Berkeley?
That's the Elwood Park. That abuts the property on the west. This is one of the dead-end streets. I think it's Zero Road, and this is one of the dead-end streets that abuts the subject property to the -- it abuts it to the west. We just wanted to take this slide. You can see that there's public controversy in the area. There are a number of the signs that you see on the lower slide around the neighborhood. Again, this is a little closer view of the dead-end street. This would be the street that ends at the Tap Street on the western side of the subject property. That's it. We'll go back to the subject.
Andy, was the timestamp correct on there, that that was 1 o'clock in the afternoon?
Yes. Yes, that's when we did our site inspections. Okay. Stonewater runoff is to be collected via catch basins and directed to naturalized recharge areas and ponds. In addition, a recharge area or recharge basin is proposed at the northeast corner of the complex. Stonewater treatment systems will conform to town requirements and include revegetation with appropriate natural water tolerant species. Required parking for the retirement community is set at 500 parking stalls. 816 stalls are proposed, and is in compliance with Town of Huntington zoning law. Access for the proposed retirement community is to be from two ingress egress points to County Road 10. Proposed widening to be dedicated to County of Suffolk is included at the main entrance intersection with Elwood Road and Hammond Road, roughly center of the proposed development. An alternate restricted ingress egress -- I'm sorry, an alternate restricted ingress egress for right turns only is proposed at the western property boundary with Elwood Road. Emergency access is not proposed. There appears to be no pedestrian access to the adjacent town of Huntington, Elwood Park. Preliminary traffic analysis was provided in the Expanded EIF, listing several mitigation measures. Traffic analysis is continuing. The subject site is presently cleared and developed land, with the exception of a small amount of natural vegetation at the western property boundary. The subject property is situated to the north of the Fair Oaks Residential Development, also bordering the southern property boundaries, the Town of Huntington Elwood Park. To the west and north are additional residential developments and two public school properties. The proposed project is not located in the Suffolk County Pine Barren Zone. The subject parcel is not located in a state special groundwater protection area. The site is situated over Hydrogeologic Management Zone 1. The subject property is not in a state-designated critical environmental area. No state or designated wetlands occur on the subject property. A Phase 1 environmental site bordered was conducted for the subject property and is being reviewed by the New York State DEC and the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and there is a recommendation for a soil management plan, which is under development. With regard to the staff analysis, general municipal law considerations indicate that it is the petitioner's contention that the proposed senior condominium complex is a transitional use between the low-density residential lands to the east and west, the institutional commercial uses to the north, and the public recreational lands to the south. The petitioner puts forth that the proposal presents an opportunity not only to remove the dairy-related commercial trucking operation and its associated noise and odor impacts, but would also remove the source of odors from the dairy waste treatment facility. The proposed building will be two stories in height and would be consistent with the predominant -- predominant residential pattern and character in the area. With regard to local comprehensive plan recommendations, the Town of Huntington Horizon's 2020 Comprehensive Plan Update identifies the subject property as low-density residential, which is defined as less than two units to the acre. The subject petition, as indicated by the applicant, results in a land use density of 9.72 units to the acre. The petitioners have indicated that the project is consistent with the spirit and intent, as well as key elements of the town comprehensive plan, which recognizes the importance of providing a mix of senior housing types. This proposal provides senior housing opportunities and economic housing alternatives for senior households. The proposed redevelopment, the proposed retirement complex, however, is not situated in a location where health-related infrastructure exists or is reasonably expected to be proposed in the area. This would be positive locational criteria for an age-restricted senior housing community if such infrastructure was in the immediate area. With regard to the Planning Commission's guideline considerations, recharge lagoons in the property's west-central area, sanit-, I'm sorry. What did I lose here? Okay, liquid waste from the existing dairy operation, as indicated, are treated and recharged, recharged in an open-air treatment system comprised of freestanding buildings and subsurface recharge lagoons in the property's west-central area. Sanitary waste generated on the site were treated in septic systems. Both of these septic systems will be removed as part of the demolition clearing operation. All of the proposal's wastewater will be retained onsite and treated in a modern state-of-the-art sewage treatment plant. No additional details on the proposed STP have been referred to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Early review by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and the Suffolk County Department of Public Works is warranted. Stone water runoff from the proposed project will be retained onsite, as indicated, and recharged via a drainage system designed to include a new recharge area and two new ponds created along the site's eastern border on Elwood Road. The two naturalized recharge areas surrounding these ponds may be vegetated with appropriate natural water-tolerant species to provide wildlife habitat and to provide an attractive appearance for passing motorists. The petitioners should be encouraged to review the Suffolk County Planning Commission publications on the study of man-made ponds in Suffolk County and managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies, is our recommendation, that the petitioner incorporate into the proposal where practical, designed elements that are contained therein. Part of the staff report, which follows, contains some stats from the AARP, particularly requiring attention to the walkability and the enhanced transportation services. Moving along in the staff report, the petitioners put forth that the site is on a county roadway that places the property, quote, "in proximity to regional transportation corridor, New York State Route 25, Jericho Turnpike, as well as the commercial retail shopping opportunities along that corridor." While this is an accurate statement, the subject retirement community is not located within downtown or within reasonable walking distance to a transit route, two features that would be positive locational, additional positive locational criterias for an age-restricted senior housing community. The New York State Route 25 commercial corridor would be approximately .7 mile walk south along Elwood Road. Commercial office and retail uses are inter-dispersed, situated east and west along that corridor. There is no Suffolk County bus transit route along Elwood Road fronting the subject site. County Bus Route S4 can be picked up on Route 25, proximate to the Huntington Square Mall. The closest route for bus pickup would be Lawrence Road to the east, which is about a half mile, and then you'd have to walk north to Cedar Road or south to Burr Road. The closest Long Island Railroad train stations are the Green Lawn Station, approximately 2.8 miles to the northwest, or the Northport Station, approximately 2.6 miles to the northeast from the subject property. The proposed development has a walk score of 43 out of 100. This location is a car-dependent neighborhood, so most errands will require a car. As the development is proposed to be age-restricted to senior citizens, and senior citizens are generally increasingly less dependent on self-driven single occupancy vehicles, and since the proposed project is not in a walkable community downtown or along a transit corridor, the petitioner should be required, as a condition of approval, to provide frequent and convenient transportation to various mass transit locations, as well as major medical health facilities in the area, and to commercial centers where groceries and household items may be procured and entertainment may be found. No mention of the consideration of energy efficiency is provided in the referral material to the Suffolk County Planning Commission. Staff believes the petitioner should be encouraged to review the Suffolk County Planning Commission guideline, particularly related to energy efficiency, and incorporate where practical elements contained therein, applicable for residential and clubhouse components of the proposal. Little discussion is made in the petition to the town and refer to the Commission on Public Safety and Universal Design. The applicant should review the Planning Commission guidelines, particularly related to public safety and universal design, and incorporate into the proposal where practical design elements contained therein. With the above in consideration, Mr. Chairman and Commission, the staff is recommending approval of the change of zone from R-40 to RM for the BK Elwood LLC for the construction of 360-unit age-restricted senior citizen retirement community, with the following modification and comments. The modification being that the petitioner shall be required, as a condition of approval, to provide frequent and convenient transportation to the various mass transit locations, major medical health facilities, and to commercial centers. Staff provides the reason for that recommended mitigation, and the reason essentially is that the subject retirement community is not located within a downtown or within reasonable walking distance to transit routes or medical facilities. With respect to comments, staff is recommending that the following comments be provided to the Town of Huntington. Early review by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and the Suffolk County Department of Works is warranted. That's related to the sewage treatment facility. Second comment is that the petitioners review the County Planning Commission publication on the study of man-made ponds. Third comment is that the petitioners review the Commission Petition on Managing Stormwater Through Natural Vegetation and Green Methodologies. The fourth comment is that the petitioners are directed to New York State DOT and the Suffolk County Department of Public Works to resolve traffic and access considerations. The petitioner should be encouraged to review the commission's guidebook related to energy efficiency. That's the fifth comment. The sixth comment is that the petitioner review guidelines related to public safety. Seventh comment is that petitioner review guidelines related to universal design. Eighth comment is that a pedestrian connection be made between the walking path and the Huntington Town Elwood Park. The ninth comment is that the town may wish to consider reducing the overall density of the petition to be more in line with the recommended density from the Comprehensive Plan Update. And the final recommendation is that the town may wish to cluster the overall development to the east to provide continuous recreational open space from the town park to the south and school athletic fields to the northwest. That is the staff report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. Remind the commission, as always, that our focus in all of these projects that we see is on the regional issues that implicate, that come to bear on these projects. And our job is to leave to the Town Board the more localized issues that may arise. The, I also would note that I know our council, this quarter, wanted to remind the commission, as all of you know, the commission is a very odd duck under state law and county law in terms of what it's allowed to consider under the law, which can be frustrating sometimes, but anyway. Mary?
Yes, simply what you already know is right, that you're to focus on the referral materials that you've been given in your deliberations.
Thank you. All right, this is the Huntington project, so we'll turn to Commissioner Casey from Huntington first again.
Thank you. I think that the most important thing we should be looking at is the regional significance, the issue of housing, which is a real big problem that we see time and time again, especially housing for older people. I know there's some issues with respect to where this is planned, and it might not be the most ideal location for a retirement community, but there's not a lot of large open spaces next to hostels or grocery stores any longer. I think the one concern I have is the lack of open space and maybe looking to the comments that are included in our report, having the town may wish to cluster the overall development to the east might be something they could look into. I'd like to see more clustering and really more open space. It seems overlooked dense. But overall, I think it's important that we provide this type of housing for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Casey? Other thoughts, comments, questions? Mr. Kaufman? Let me go back this way.
I've been all over. Is this thing on?
Yes.
I've been all over a lot of places. Is this going to be a travelogue? Or would you like to start with South Dakota, where I crashed? Okay, or Canada, where I crashed in an airplane. Okay. This thing, I've been all over the place. I've got pros and cons. I've got a whole list back and forth. A lot of it is maybe, if you will, sort of reserved for the Town of Huntington, and it's more a localized concern. And then we've also frankly got the regional concerns. The regional concern is what Commissioner Casey brought up. We've got limited over 55 communities in Long Island, and also in the town of Huntington, we've got Pominock, and we've also got the Greens down in Melville. There is a definite need. I do buy that. Only 3% to 4% of the town is reserved for seniors. 28% of the total population is over 55. Huntington has a fortunate advantage in certain ways over other towns in that a lot of, I know a lot of people who want to age in place in the town. They don't necessarily want to move out. They do want to downsize. They don't want to leave. The amenities are such that they like staying there, as opposed to maybe where I live. That town shall remain nameless at this point in time. But there is definitely a need for this, and we are seeing this. And is the over 55 stock adequate at this point in time? No, and that's the problem. Is this an ideal location? Frankly, I travel by it, I don't know, three times a week, four times a week. Elwood stinks, as somebody said, as a road. It is the absolute worst place to put something like this. On the other hand, it's redevelopment of an industrial use. If this was virgin land, maybe I might come with a different opinion, but this is redevelopment of the use. And that's happening more and more on Long Island. We need to start considering that. But again, you know, we've got a master plan. If we decide against that master plan, which is in place at this point in time, you know, that's an issue that we have to very, very carefully consider. There's a need out there, and the town's master plan does talk about it. There is also a master plan saying that redevelopment of industrial sites on maiden roads is a good thing. Does it anticipate one-lane primary access roads? Not really. So I'm sort of trying to balance it back and forth. I'm a little bit unclear in my mind at this point in time. There's a lot of good with this, and there's a lot of bad. I mean, we get to clean up the property. We get an STP that might actually work up there. If this thing goes into county receivership, for example, it'd be a brownfield that we'd have to taxpayers' cover. Here, we hopefully will have the cost borne by the developer to clean up a lot of the property. On the other hand, it's not TOD. It's car, totally car-dependent. I think for this board at this point in time, it's a balancing act, more than anything else. We have to look at this regionally, unfortunately. I mean, I'd love to get into the nuts and bolts of this, but I don't know that that's our role. So I just wanted to sort of throw that out there at this point in time.
Appreciate that. Why don't we move on and move to Commissioner Ochutella, and then over to Commissioner Barry.
Yeah, I agree with my other two colleagues. It's a catch-22, but overall, when I look at the plan, it's something that we need in housing stock. Right now, Suffolk County is way behind the national average, and I think the developers, they compromise a little bit. If they could put a plan together, it would be, it would be good. The one thing that I have concern about is that I heard in the testimony today that the developers went from 14 to 10, and then to 9.2 or something. And then we're asking them, in number nine, take a look and reduce the overall density again. And I don't know if that's a red flag that we're waving, and that should be left to the town, zoning and planning. That's my personal feeling. I don't know how you feel about it.
And actually, do you mind if I just jump in and remind folks to just consider the referral material, just as a caution?
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Commissioner Barry?
First of all, it looks a little bit like spot zoning to me because the density, the zoning for the high density is usually associated with smart growth principles. And this is a location that doesn't have smart growth principles. The other thing is, it doesn't sound like it's that compatible with the plan for the area for a couple of reasons. One, when you have a small community, a large project has a huge impact on the identity. So, you know, a larger community could absorb this more easily than a small community can. So that high percentage is an issue for having a kind of spot zoning change. The other thing that I'm really concerned about is the whole water and nitrogen issue, of course. And it looks to me like the town introduced the R-40 zoning. You're getting for free a 50% reduction in nitrogen loading from this land. And, you know, that is a significant movement forward because this hydrological zone allows half-acre zoning, but they chose to put one-acre zoning here. So there's that protection that the zoning has put in place. We are going to be undermining that protection. In fact, we're going to reverse it. And the sewage treatment plant, like in the wastewater and the nitrogen loading that we've been looking at, it's not just flow that is an issue, where you have a water quality issue, it's total pounds of nitrogen. So even though they're introducing an onsite sewage treatment plant, I did a rough calculation. A sewage treatment plant can take 75, or 74% of the nitrogen out of the load. So if you kind of reverse that formula to their existing zoning, that would mean a maximum of 148 homes would be equivalent to that nitrogen load. So with a sewage treatment plant, I'm thinking 148 homes is kind of the maximum that we should consider. Or, you know, to make it more general, because there might be some variations, to put it so that we have a density where no additional pounds of nitrogen loading would occur on this site. So the sewage treatment plant would take them to a certain level of density beyond this, but not allow it to go forward. Now, just to indicate the impact that this difference between 148 and 360, if we were trying to mitigate the nitrogen with onsite systems to another 50%, that difference, the 212 extra homes, would cost us 7.4 million in individual onsite systems. So that's a considerable weight on the public if our goal is to reduce nitrogen in this area. So I think we should be careful before throwing away something that costs nothing to something that becomes a burden on us. Another issue is the parking. They have 816 spots, but only 540 are required by code. So I would suggest, starting with the, or starting with what's required by code, maybe only having a small vacancy and then land banking the rest, because that seems like way too much coverage for the use. This also, I mean, just looking at the pictures, there's no sidewalks in the community. It's not a community that goes beyond itself. So what I would recommend is moving nine and 10 of Andy's recommendations to modifications, and adding to nine, an indication that the total nitrogen load and pounds should not exceed what exists under the current zoning.
Okay. Made note of that. Adrian, you need to leave, so I'll let you have your comments.
Okay, I have a number of comments as well. Number one is I want to support, actually, something Lynn has just said, and normally I don't think, and I didn't follow the calculation, I'm not going to lie, so I can't support or not support it. I honestly don't follow it. However, I just want to add that since we are looking at this from a regional perspective, an important thing to remember in Northport is that it has some of the highest concentrations of nitrogen in drinking water supplies. And in fact, in Northport, four municipal drinking water wells into the Maggiore Aquifer, which is the middle aquifer, the Suffolk County Water Authority actually had to shut down one or two wells because of high levels of nitrogen, and they had the choice of either moving them, which was a considerable cost, putting on a on a very sophisticated filtration system at another considerable cost, or digging existing wells deeper at another considerable cost. So each remedy was very costly. Having said that, number two is that the point that is on here that Andy raised, which is number, I believe is number 10?
Yes.
Yes, clustering. You know, and listen, Andy, you could help me with this. The facility doesn't seem to have any open space, does it, for the community? And, you know, I am pretty close to 55 and as are some of my colleagues here on, on the commission, not you, John, you're like the young pop, okay? And you two call. But, you know, I think there's no outdoor areas here and for very senior citizens, you know, people visit, like grandchildren. So to me, a real home is someplace where there is an outdoor area. And it seems logical that that outdoor area would buffer the school for a number of reasons, one of which because the school does have athletic fields and there is a lot of activity on athletic fields, hence the name athletic fields. And so some-
Thank you for that.
Thank you for the scientific analysis of what's going on here. But it seems it would be good for the residents as well as good for the school to avoid conflict. You know, the best thing about conflict is avoiding it.
Just to be clear, we, I mean, the recommendation of staff is that there be open space put in, is that this is a conceptual site plan, so I think you're just saying that you support the staff recommendation that there be clustering when this actually, you know, if this actually does ever go to full site plan, right?
That's correct. Because this way it'll avoid a problem before it occurs. The third thing, and the final thing I'm going to comment on is that I, I'm not sure if we had captured this, Andy, in the staff recommendations or the comments, but we should support a full comprehensive soil remediation plan. Heavy metals migrate slow in groundwater, but pesticides can migrate quickly in groundwater, both of which accumulate, bioaccumulate in the environment, heavy metals and pesticides. So I think we should, as our responsibility is, to accent comprehensive remediation of soils as well as, and I did not read the EAF nor if there was any scientific analysis, but if there is groundwater testing and if there is contamination that has leached into groundwater, that needs to be remediated as well. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair. Commissioner Gabrielson?
I think, you know, I'm kind of torn also with Spud. I mean, regionally, I think, you know, here there is really a great need for senior housing, you know. A couple of things I just wanted to mention on Spud because I think, Glenn, I think, looking at pictures of the whole area, it seems to be a little bit out of place. And, you know, I do have concerns with the traffic there. But, you know, it is a small town and so that's something maybe we should consider. But question for Andy, these units, do we have a price of what they were going to sell for?
No, I don't have that in front of me. There are going to be market retards.
Oh, okay.
With the exception of the-
I'm just curious because-
Except part of it needs to be-
Eighteen percent is a four.
Eighteen percent is four.
Okay, eighteen percent, okay. All right, there's one, you know, the concerns is, you know, we have such an influx of elderly moving out of the area because they can't afford Long Island. I know I have a place up in Scarry County and actually three-quarters of the tax roll are from seniors that have retired off of Long Island that just can't afford anything here. So that's, that's a, that's a, you know, huge problem is affordability of this.
Thank you, Glenn. Commissioner Finn, you want to say something?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. The, you know, the following calls point about the, what's supporting tax bases in other municipalities. I think that's going to be a safe assumption for half of the Carolinas and Florida. We're seeing, there's a million checks a day that go to the New York State Pension Fund that go down to other municipalities other than spending the dollars here. There's, there's obviously a void of this type of housing stock in this community and this township or even this island. You know, we hear professional, professionals coming for this commission and talk about the crisis in, in housing and it's for young people and for the senior citizens as well. So, you know, the, the reason why, in my opinion, is it's just, it's purely supply and demand. And Andy, I know we're doing a lot of work at the commission to talk about housing stocks and supplies and year-over-year applications. You know, other, we've talked about this, other than patch-up, we're not really moving the needle as far as supplies. And that's why affordability is out of reach for most people. And then coupled with, we have the highest property taxes in the nation. And with regards to a senior, you know, when I read this application on Friday, actually I read it a little bit of the weekend, I was thinking about, you know, what is, what's the downside? We're, we're taking a farmland that is, has contaminants and rest assured, whoever develops this property is going to be, is going to mitigate all of those issues. They will not get past step, step one without mitigating that. Secondly is the, we're going to, this can be controlled, septic. The alternative, Glenn has, like you point out with your numbers, which again, I didn't have, I couldn't follow that quick, but 148 homes, putting that into the nitrate, putting those type of nitrates into the ground, this is going to be a, a septic system. So that's, that's, that's a plus for us as accounting because when we, sewer treatment plan, I'm sorry. Sorry. The sewer treatment plan. So, and then the school districts, you know, the, every school district is at max capacity and going up as far as their budget. Their enrollments are going down. This isn't going to put a drain on the, this is not going to put any kids in the school district. It's going to add $3 million to the school district. So why would there be an opposition from that standpoint, which I, I can't fathom that? I think you should be grabbing people on the ears and kissing me on both cheeks if they want to put a tax positive to two, three million dollars.
It's not three million.
The, or, and on top of that, you know, the town of Huntington is well noted with their $900 million in debt. And the county's a billion and a half dollars in debt. So at what point do we start to say, all right, we, we know that everything has an issue, but we have to take care of the people that are living here now. And that is our seniors and that is our young people. The only problem I see here with this is that it is age restricted. I think it should be a, for multi-generational. I'm not a big proponent of putting all our old people, quote, in one gated community. You know, one of the diversities of growing up on Long Island is that we had seniors on my block growing up and now, and I, there's a lot of life lessons learned. When you, when you create these gated communities, that's, that's taken out of the, our social fabric. But be that as it may, it's not going to be the drain on a school district and I think the schools should look favorably upon them, especially if they're going into reserve.
All right. Right this way, Ann Kaufman. And then back. Let's, let's, let's- I don't need to travel on. Okay. All right. Okay. Andy, I was not able to access the EAF or the Huntington documents that might have been out there. I'm talking about Seagull, obviously. There was a phase one, that's as far as it's gone?
That's great.
Was anything found in the phase one?
I don't have it itemized in front of me, but there were some contaminants, some typical farming pesticides, some arsenic in the soils, some heavy metals.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike, I'm sorry to tease you like that. All right, Glenn.
Actually, I agree with John, believe it or not, on-
Wow.
My world was wised.
And it's not equal food state.
No.
All right, go.
But I agree, in a way, the restriction to senior housing shouldn't be on this property. And it does bother me that if we approve this, that zoning goes in place. But two other things. I don't see variety in the proposal of units in this site. It looks like townhouses, which indicates two floors, which indicates stairs. So to me, this development doesn't really address some of the issues of aging in place with the design of the units. And one other thing is by approving this zoning to a much higher density, you've actually killed the transfer of development rights, which would have helped protect the waters. So you're killing this whole program that we're spending all this effort putting in place because it's a way around it.
All right. Yeah, great.
If it's three stories, would they propose elevators? Or there's two?
There are two stories, we have elevators. Elevators for the second floor.
And every building?
They're flat with elevators for the second floor.
Okay. All right.
Clear, thank you.
Yeah, that's all right. All right, anyone else? Here's what we got. We had a couple of suggestions, which I think, I think we could probably all live with, and a couple of suggestions that we need to, you know, probably discuss. Adrian had a suggestion that we include as a comment that there be a comprehensive remediation of contaminated soils, including heavy metals, pesticides, other hazardous contaminants, and that any groundwater contamination should be remediated as well. Is there any objection to adding that as a comment, first of all? I think as John said, they pretty much have to do that, but it's important that they point it out. Second thing was Glenn just mentioned about land banking or suggested that the applicant consider land banking, access parking, that certainly would help with runoff and other issues. Any objection to making the comment, the suggestion that there be a land bank, they look to land bank access parking? All right, objection to that. Glenn has also raised the issue of suggesting the applicant to look at exploring a variety of housing. Again, this isn't the formal site plan, this is the conceptual, but is there any objection to adding that as a comment? Also, Glenn has mentioned about pedestrian friendly and I think that was a point that we've often incorporated as part of our public safety recommendations, which, which are number six, but I would just propose then as a corollary, what you're saying, Glenn has then, that we just add on to number six, which does include pedestrian access, but we explicitly emphasize, you know, making the, the community pedestrian friendly. Is that all right? Okay. Now, the rub seemed to be in number nine. Glenn, you suggested making number nine, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, you also suggested making number 10 a modification. I would suggest that we could leave that as a comment because the, it's a light, it would be a condition that, you know, this, that needs to be, there's a lot of things that would go into whether to cluster or not, I think we certainly can emphasize it. We could quite frankly move it up as a, in terms of comments, I mean, we could make that the first comment for, you know, if we're right with that.
I think it's kicking in the bottom there, maybe move it up.
Yeah, I agree, that's fine. I mean, there's obviously no practical legal effect of that, it's just sort of emphasizing that as something that's important. And the staff can emphasize that. Andy, you can emphasize that in a, in a referral letter as well.
Okay.
All right. But the rub we have is on, I think, nine. And that is this issue about the density. Glenn has suggested making nine a modification where we would include in there that note that the town should not allow additional pounds of nitrogen to be included in the applicant, or based upon the as-of-right development, compared to the as-of-right development. Okay. Ray has suggested we take number nine out altogether. All right. We got nine people here.
We're suing Debbie.
We're suing Debbie. So.
So we only have one name?
Exactly. So the question is, is I'd like other people to weigh in on nine, because I need to know where the board is, the rest of the board. Do you feel like we should take it out? Do you feel like we should leave it in? If we leave, and if we leave it in, should it be a modification with the addition that Glenn has suggested, which was the additional, no additional pounds of loading? Okay?
David, could you refresh our memory of what the difference is if we make it a modification?
If we make it a modification, the town board needs to either abide by that or they need to overcome that with a supermajority vote.
They're already in a supermajority.
Well, that's not, I don't think that's part of the record. Is that part of the record?
No, that's not part of our-
It's not part of the record. So, so those are the options, okay? So it's either take it out, as Ray suggested, leave it in, as is, it's another option. Or, you know, sort of raise it up, the way Glenn was suggesting, into a modification and adding the language, no additional pounds of loading. So I'd like to get a sense of support. Yes?
Is there an option to strengthen the language that's there?
Yes.
Yes.
That would be possible? All right, so we have a fourth option? Out, in, in with edits, or up?
I think, I think a good compromise, folks, would be to do, I don't, let's be honest, we don't have the votes to move it up. What we could do is move it, is to strengthen it with language.
I agree, strengthening would be a good compromise.
Well, you know, my feeling is that at this, at this level, at this, at our commission, we're not charged with, with this task. I think it's oftentimes with, when we get, when we meddle in density, the, it's more of a design over density. And we, if, it often happens is they go from 500 units down to 400 units, down to 360 units, and then where it has become bottom, and then, and then it changes the overall matrix of the financial viability of the complex. And then it goes from having brick facades and hardy boards to vinyl. And it goes from the amenities, like you even said, Adrian, the amenities, you wouldn't want to move there. You know, then it becomes one less pool, one less jacuzzi. So I don't think, I think we should leave that at the town. And if anything, I'd just say, I would say just remove it all together because it's not something, it's, it's a, it's a-
Well, I think a point of interest for my colleague is that I, this is not a discussion about bricks and mortar, this is a discussion actually, or a comment about groundwater protection, which is a resource protection, which is in the charge of the planning commission. So while I think that moving it up is going to be a difficult challenge, I think at least making it a comment and a strong comment at that allows for a greater awareness of development's relationship to our resource protection.
Ray? Sorry, I thought you were going to say something.
Well, they're going to put, they're going to put the sewer in, right?
Yes.
And they're going to remediate the property, right?
Yes.
And now we're going to dictate?
We're not going to dictate, you suggest-
Well, we're going to suggest-
Okay, that's all.
On, on something that, that I feel is wrong. If they've already compromised twice, why are we doing it a third time?
Are you kidding? Well, I don't think they're compromising. They're doing what they need to do to get their project. I mean, having a sewer system isn't a compromise, it's a necessity. And remediating toxics is also not a compromise, that's a necessity. You don't put people's homes on top of toxic waste, except the nice look. But I think what we need to do is, sorry, Dave. So this is, this is a reasonable compromise, if we want to vote on this?
Well, I think it's a comment, but, I mean, that's why I think they're compromised. As a comment, it's not forcing them to do anything, it's making them look at it. So I, I don't think that there's harm by adding it as a comment.
It's not a modification, it's just a comment.
It's not a modification, it's a comment. The question is, is whether, you know, what language would be appropriate there and whether we could have eight votes to carry that. So I guess I would ask John and Ray if there's any language that they could live with in the number nine, how they'd change it to make them feel a little bit.
Andy, just want to understand the numbers. How many units is it per acre right now?
Right now, it's 9.7.
The current zoning.
No, 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 how many units is the, is the application from the town? How many units, I mean, how many units per acre there?
It's a little under 10, right?
Right, 9.7.
And what is the adopted plan for the, this 2020?
Less than, less than one unit per acre.
No, the adopted plan for, I mean, what is the zoning for the, for the R10 zoning that which they're going for? How many units per acre is that?
14. Or that range. So- So to your point, if you were to get, if you were to change zone, this is less than what you would get for typical zone change.
Yeah, that's my point. I think it's already been addressed, it's been identified, and it's already coming in below the bar. So the, the bar is 14 units to the acre. That's the, this is the application to which we as a commission are reviewing. It's a change of zone to this R10 zoning, which is 14 units to the acre. This is nine units to the acre.
Okay.
It's for, it's existing, the existing-
Commissioner Kaufman?
You know, speaking of what you're talking about, John, you have it come down to 9.7, okay? They could go with higher density, but it's still a lot of units and it is still basically not conforming to the area. I'm not saying no to it necessarily, it's still up in the air, but it's very, very heavy, intense use over there. And again, you've got a master plan saying one thing and yet you've got zoning saying something else, but is that zoning applicable over here? This is not R10 zoning or anything like that. This was R20 and R40 zoning. So it's, you very much have character in that sense. But again, at the same time, they have compromised, I get that.
Okay. Well, I, obviously there's, the question is just whether there's any line- Well, I, obviously, there's, the question is whether there's any language in nine that can be lived with, and if the answer's no, we'll just, we'll just put it to a vote. So, the, the proposal was to strip the language of nine. All in favor of stripping out nine, please raise your hand. Yeah, stripping out nine. Opposed? In favor of raising nine up as a modification, with the addition that there'd be no, the recommendation to the town that there be no, sorry, I apologize, it would be raising up a modification which would say, the comment as it is, with the additional sentence that the town should allow no, no further, no additional pounds of nitrogen loading beyond which would be allowed as-of-right. Is that right, Glenda? Okay. All in favor of that modification, please, of making that modification, please raise your hand. Four opposed. And then I'll take it as-is, which is leaving it as a comment as-is, which is the town board may wish to consider reducing the overall density of the petition to be more in line with the recommended density from the comprehensive plan update.
You missed one.
I do have one left, yes, which is the editing version, but no one's suggested.
Shane, can you wish?
Well, it's a, or, you know, should, consider.
Yeah, but it's still preparatory language, it's still, it's not in order, it's still...
It's a comment that's not in order at all. Nothing to it, the error is... So, the town board, you know, should consider reducing the overall density of the petition to be more in line? Okay? All in favor of that? Raise your hand. Three, five. All right. So, we don't have a majority for anything. So, no, I will move the, I will move the staff report as written with the additions that we added, which were unanimous, which was, this, the comments as written through 10, moving 10 up to the first comment, and adding the following comments. One, compliant, comprehensive remediation of contaminated soils. Two, the landbanking access, landbanking access parking. Three, adding to our public safety comment, an additional sentence about making it more pedestrian friendly. And four, urging applicants to increase, or considering a variety of housing. So I will make that motion for the staff report with those amendments. Second by Commissioner Coughlin. All in favor, please raise your hand.
We'd love to play, only because I want the comments, otherwise it'd be opposed.
Six opposed. One. Abstention, oh, two. Abstention zero. All right. Final vote is six to two. Goes back to the town as a no action, and we'll move on to the next item. Next item is the property from Riverhead.
Are you kidding?
We have the Greenworks, Greenworks, S Power, Richwood, Greenworks, Riverhead property.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Do you want to make that one change?
Oh, sure.
That's my copy, so I don't want to leave it.
Oh, okay.
There is a law.
Whoa, 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 first of all, sit down. Sit down. Yeah, yeah, first of all, everyone has their opinions around the table, we only have eight votes, and only eight votes, eight votes to pass it, so we can't agree on nine, then we can't agree on, sorry, couldn't agree on number nine, then we could agree, so...
Part of the effort, yeah.
Andy, the next project was Greenworks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the next referral comes to us from the town of Riverhead. This is the referral of S Power, Richard Greenworks LLC. Jurisdiction for the commission is that the subject property is in agricultural district number seven and is within one mile of an airport.
Hang on a second, hang on a second. The, the way to re-race it is to have someone who voted against it to make a motion to reconsider, to have that passed by eight votes, and to propose something that everyone else would love, would vote for. That's the way to do it.
They got what they wanted, there are no comments.
I understand that.
No modifications.
Yes, that's right. We need eight votes.
That's what they wanted.
There. We need eight votes to pass something, so...
I voted in favor of you.
No, I, so...
You're working to negotiate a compromise, and there's no respect for that at all in the process, it's just a total underlining.
So, okay, I, 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 sit, sit down, sit down, sit down, sit down. If there's a proposal by those who voted no to reconsider, we can do that. We need to have eight votes to reopen it, and then we could, we could strip nine out and go back with the rest of the comments, that is true. That is true. That motion needs to be made, I believe, other Robert's rules has to be made by someone who voted no, right? Okay. So, if you guys, if those who voted no, well, you know what, I can, can I switch my vote? No, I voted yes.
Did he close? He didn't. Actually, you had moved on, so it wasn't...
It was closed, all right. So, the only two who can do it are, are, are John or Ray, and the question is just whether the other comments, if we stripped out nine, would you guys be willing to reentertain it so that we would at least include the other comments?
Could the two no votes basically live with number nine out?
Yep.
That's basically it.
That's right. Which was your proposal, Ray?
Which was what you were talking about.
So Ray makes the motion to reopen.
I'll second.
Second, if we need to, we need to have, because we only have eight of us, has to be eight votes, so... Motion to reopen by Commissioner Stacey. Yes.
Just, Andy, just, just a question, again, regarding number one, because we didn't get to that one, because I think we were...
Your earlier review, sir?
No, the, the modification. Glenda, can I please speak? When you were speaking, I let you speak. So, please. On what grounds do we have, Andy, and what applicants have we done in years past where we would intervene at this level with a zone change to put a modification pertaining to an amenity or an item within the, within the, within the applicant of requiring transportation to and fro, or shopping and transportation and stuff like that? When would we've made that a modification?
Staff, remember, Finn, staff has made that recommendation numerous times, I don't know off the top of my head how many times that recommendation has made it into a commission resolution, but from staff's perspective, this is an age-restricted, multifamily community. Ideally, under planning guidelines, it should be walkable, it should be in a downtown or in a TOD, it does not have those locational criterias. We would make that recommendation every time.
Let me make sure we do this right procedurally, because I don't think we are supposed to reopen, so at first, vote to reopen, which doesn't mean you have to vote for anything.
They were gonna open, and then we're the second.
Yeah. Yeah, but we didn't actually vote to reopen. Vote to reopen, is John voting for that?
Yeah, we can reopen, because I can keep the vote.
Yes, you, you still vote, no.
Okay. So, so with that being said, because of the modification, I would be in favor of making that a comment, and I would be in favor of opening the applicant and voting on the amended applicant for modification, because I just don't want to...
Oh, you're, you're saying you would be willing to support if we, if we moved that modification down to a comment?
Yes, and, because I just don't think that we have the, I just don't think, we as a commission, this is in our purview, to make this a modification. So the, and I think it's, I think the other comments are warranted, and again, if we're handing something down to the town, then we should have something at least request in the record.
All right. Other thoughts on that? Obviously, there's only eight of us, so if anyone has a problem with that, we'll just move on, but if, if, if we want them, if that's the only way this will happen, then we can make it a comment. Yes. Sorry.
I mean, I was just gonna say that I have a problem kicking out nine if we can be able to pass it, but I, but I don't, I mean, I think number one's really important, considering, considering the population it's going to be and where this, where this is located, that this is a really important consideration that needs to be thought out. I, I just think it's an important thing, there should be less of the modification, I don't think that should be something I would think this.
Remember another thing, the language is should, it's not mandatory, right? It's not mandatory, it's just a very heavy, sort of heavy direction, saying you really should try and do this, it is not mandatory.
If I could, I'm sorry, Mike, if I could just interrupt, I'm sorry. When staff read the report to the commission, we did read the word shall, so it is intended to be, the petition is shall be required.
All right, so I take that one back.
My mistake, I'm sorry.
So maybe we could change the language to that.
All right.
Should, should.
Would that be okay if we should?
Well, the recommendation is should, so, it's written as should, so...
Yeah, I don't believe anything Andy says.
Strike that. Go ahead, Andy, what are you gonna say?
It is the pleasure of the commission, we intended to write shall, it came out should.
Well, if that's the intent of the commission, then I would say move it to a comment versus a modification.
Any objections to moving that to a comment as opposed to a modification?
We can get the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, I'm opposed to it because this will be, so we, we might as well just vote against it.
But Glenda's will lose the other stuff. We have to write out vote as a block if we're going to get any of these comments through.
The state law requires eight votes, and unfortunately, with a couple of people here, it binds us, which isn't a happy thing at all, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Glenda, and I'd rather this stay, but if the only way that we'll get these other comments in is to, it's compromise, and I hate to compromise, but I'd rather we do some type of compromise so we get this other stuff in there, I think that's more important.
The, without saving, with saving deliberation in the hour, I would say let's, let's approve the staff report as, as noted with the word should, not shall, and, and take a vote on it.
Same with the modification?
That's correct.
And that's against my rule.
I'll make that motion. Standing it by Carl, all in favor, please raise your hand. That's eight, nothing. Next item is, is Riverhead.
All right, so, so we're clear.
All, all the changes we had earlier, right?
Right.
I'm sorry.
One modification and then all the comments.
With all, with all the other comments in there, yeah, absolutely.
And the language on the modification is should.
Right.
And nine is out.
And nine is out.
Nine is out.
Nine is out.
I kept the question.
So let me lead on, for the record, let's be very clear. Let's be very, very clear, that the motion was for the comments as written, with the exception of adding the comment on remediation of soils, adding the comment on considering land banking access parking, adding the comment to the public safety comment on, ensuring that it's pedestrian friendly, adding the comment that they consider a variety of housing, deleting comment nine, raising comment 10 from the bottom of the list to the top. That's the motion. Second was by Carl. Right?
We made the motion?
Dave.
Dave.
All in favor? Raise your hand. Let's take the roll. To zero. Okay. The next item is Riverhead, with Richwood, Greenworks.
S Power, Richard Greenwood LLC, referred to us from the town of Riverhead. This jurisdiction for this application is that the subject property is in agricultural district number seven, and is within one mile of an airport, that would be the Calhoun Airport. The applicants are seeking area variance approval from the town of Riverhead Zoning Board of Appeals and site plan approval from the town of Riverhead Planning Board for construction of proposed solar array generating facility for up to 6.3 megawatts that would be interconnected to an existing PSG Long Island substation located adjacent to the south of the subject property. The dimensional relief sod is for front rear and side yard setbacks requirements in accordance with industrial A zoning classification. The requested variances are in conjunction with the proposed construction of a solar panel array on 38.1 acres of land on the majority of the subject property, which has a total of 41, 45.1 acres. Up on the screen is the subject property outlined in red, you can see the subject property is a sod farm, and is located on the east side of Edwards Avenue, just above Long Island Railroad. Excellent. Okay, that's just a closer view, next slide. An oblique view of the subject property, again, it shows the PSG transformer station in the bottom right of the slide, the, there's a fuel service facility on the bottom left. This is the zoning, you can see the subject property is all in industrial A zoning, on the west side of the Edwards Avenue, properties are industrial C zoning, and below the Long Island Railroad, you see properties in R40. There is the soils on the subject property, Primac soils, next slide. Okay, these are wetlands in relation to the subject property, you see on the right-hand side of the subject property, there is a state DEC mapped and regulated wetland, next slide. Property in the school district, next slide. Okay, this is the site plan for the subject property, you can see the solar arrays on the majority of the property, the upper right-hand corner of the property is natural area, areas that are sloped and where the wetland is contained. We don't have any photos of the site other than the oblique. Okay, so, the solar arrays...
Did I run Riverhead yesterday?
No, we didn't make it out to Riverhead yesterday. We go out there a lot. Couldn't make it out there yesterday. The proposed solar array will have a maximum height of 10 feet, no connection, no connection to public water or generation of sanitary waste has been proposed with this application. Access to the solar generating facility as depicted on the preliminary site plan is provided via 24-foot wide paved entrance apron along Edwards Avenue. Should be noted that the interior road system is proposed to be constructed of pervious gravel as depicted on the preliminary site plan. The site plan application referred included a conceptual planting plan depicting a variety of evergreen trees and shrubs planted in between and atop a segmented berm approximately four feet high along the property line running along Edwards Avenue, and this is in order to screen solar panel structures from views of passenger cars traveling along Edwards Avenue. A review of the character of the land use and zoning pattern in the area reveals the subject property is zoned in the same continuous block of industrial A zoning as the surrounding parcels to the north and east, with a block of industrial C parcels directly to the west across the other side of Edwards Avenue, and I read all that. The subject property is situated in hydrogeologic groundwater management zone three with the, and within the central Suffolk New York State Special Groundwater Protection Area. The subject site is not located in any central Suffolk pine barren, there are state-mapped and regulated freshwater wetlands that occur on the east reinforcement of the subject property. Subject property is within agricultural district number seven, allowing the landowner the right to farm in addition to any as-of-right uses permitted by the zoning classification of the property. The soils on the subject property are categorized as prime agricultural soil, properties to the east of the subject parcel are in agricultural district seven as well, and the adjacent property to the east is a Suffolk County PDR parcel. With regard to staff analysis and general municipal law considerations, it's believed the staff that the proposed installation of solar panel arrays and the requested area variances would not impact surrounding land uses. With respect to local comprehensive plan recommendations, the 2003 Town of Riverhead Comprehensive Land Use Plan designates the subject site industrial A for heavy industrial use, manufacturing as a permitted use in the industrial A zoning district, and even though there is not specific provision for solar energy panels, the Riverhead Department of Planning considers the proposed use manufacturing therefore permitted as a right use of the subject parcel, and therefore in conformance with the town adopted comprehensive plan. With respect to Suffolk County Planning Commission guideline considerations, the subject property is situated within the central Suffolk New York State Groundwater Protection Area designated as a deep recharge, deep groundwater recharge area. Prominent among the concerns in SGPA is the discharge of sanitary waste, as indicated there is no wastewater component to this application. It is evident in the referral to the Suffolk County Planning Commission that the applicants will have to work with the town of Riverhead in order to receive swift approval, it is not evident however that the applicants have reviewed the commission's publication on managing stormwater through natural vegetation. Though drainage reserves with dry wells are proposed as an element in the plan, it's believed the staff that the publication should be reviewed and additional stormwater mitigations incorporated with practical. The subject parcel is located within agricultural seven, and that does not prohibit it from being developed in accordance with its zoning, as long as it remains in agricultural, in an agricultural district, it can always be used for farming purposes, and the New York State Agricultural Markets Law will protect and preserve that right. Separate from the agricultural district is the agricultural assessment program overseen by the Town of Riverhead Assessors Office. The subject currently receives an agricultural exemption on its property tax bill. If the landowner of the tax exemption converts the property to anything other than agricultural purposes, the assessment and taxes will revert to what would be, what it would be without the exemption. Staff is recommending, Mr. Chairman, approval of the site plan referral from the Town Planning Board and approval of the area variance referral from the Town Zoning Board of Appeals, subject to the following comments. One, the Suffolk County Planning Commission publication on managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies to be reviewed and additional stormwater mitigations incorporated where practical. Two, the town should require the applicant be prohibited from exporting any soil material classified as prime agricultural soils off the subject property and that the proposed solar panel arrays not negatively impact the viability of the prime agricultural soils on site. And the third comment is that the proposed action should only be approved in such a manner that is in accordance with the New York State Agricultural Markets Law.
Thank you Andy, appreciate that. First of all, I wanna welcome Emma to our proceedings. Thank you for being here, Emma.
Does she get a vote?
She deserves a vote, doesn't she? Emma, you'd be an improvement over Mike, so. Anyway, thank you Emma for being here. Also, look, before we get into this, let's, let's, let me give you a thought, you know. There's, there's, we all have different views on the county and what's important and what matters to its future. I think we all value the same things. We may weight them differently. We don't come up with the applications that come before us, we just have to vote on them. And, you know, I think that this commission works best when we respect other people's opinions and when we respectfully disagree, even when that isn't the easiest thing. Now, of course, when there's only eight of us around the table, we gotta act like a family or nothing happens. And, you know, it's pretty rare that we're put in that situation because there should be 15 of us. But as you know, there's two vacancies and we had two members unable to make, three members unable to make it all and to leave, so. You know, the bottom line is there's eight of us around this table, which makes for challenges, particularly when we have people around the table who have very different points of view. But I think it's important that we respect the other points of view even when we disagree and even when we're put in a situation where we need eight votes to actually carry anything. So I just want you to know that everyone around this table is valued and everyone, he is here for a reason. He's been picked by the county executive. He's been confirmed by the candidate legislature to be here and in fact, they want a differences of opinion and they want people with their perspectives. And every once in a while, we just gotta figure out how to get along. And so I just want you all to, you know, know that's my perspective and hope that we can do that.
David, just one suggestion I would make when we're such a small group that we might consider changing the agenda. We know there's something coming up and we have people who may, we know may have to leave early, that we may wanna take the voting earlier.
We're aware of that, we wouldn't have mattered.
I think we may wanna ask then in the future if people have to leave early. That may be just a standard procedure that people should tell you if they have to leave at a particular time.
Yep, that's a good idea. You know, Adrian did mention to me as we were getting into it that she needed to leave, but. Yep, it's a good idea. So obviously we're faced with the clock there. Also, of course, we have all the, you know, comment that I don't think anyone anticipated by being quite so long, so anyway, yes.
I was just gonna say, what you say is very, very correct. We have, we have to operate as a unit and, you know, we do have different viewpoints and we have to respect all of that. Of course, you just said that after our sort of lady and Jennifer call.
Well, Emma's here, so let's, you know, Jennifer's all good.
Jennifer got compromised. I'm a lawyer, what do you have to add?
I'm glad you made that statement. I've been on numerous boards, planning boards, zoning boards, the villages and towns, and I've never seen, or we've never had to farm amongst ourselves. Fortunately, it happened. I take offense to it. That was manipulated. I'm a big boy, I put my pants on the same way as everybody else and I forgive. Going forward, I think this board has to respect the other board members on the board. That's how I feel. If not,
alright.
Maybe you should think about getting off the board.
Alright. Any other thoughts?
This is a point of procedure. Have we ever voted on something and then reopened the vote and then changed the vote again?
Yeah, I've never swore that before.
That's Robert Tools' vote. I've pushed for that a couple of times.
It's definitely permitted. Once you have a vote, you close something, you know.
It has to be done by those who, it has to be done by those who oppose it.
Some people don't understand the repercussions of their actions, that nothing's gonna go through, that they'll vote and say, oh, well, it's still going through, but then they realize that none of the other comments that want to go through will.
Yes, please. Respond to it. Actually, what bothered me on that was that Dave carefully went through everything trying to make sure we had consensus on everything. And so. But that issue wasn't brought up for that kind of discussion so Dave would have that knowledge. So it kind of undermined all, you know, the kind of working out what people could work with. So that's.
One of the tricks is that, and again, let's move on in a second. Under state law and county law, we need eight votes, no matter how many is right here, right? So it's, you know, so all of a sudden we gotta be unanimous. We have people in this room with very different views and all of a sudden we gotta be unanimous on something, which makes it difficult. So to the point, and I do wanna give Adrian, you know, a pass. She did tell me as we were getting into it that she didn't need to leave and, but.
I think that you can become standard procedure that someone has to leave at a certain time. It's publicly stated because it even gives the warning to the audience.
Yeah.
That if we don't get to rule on something, that we could lose support or whatever, so.
I think that's fair. It's one thing if we have 14 of us around the table or 13 of us around the table, but obviously like this one. Okay, look, kumbaya, life will go on. And we're up to talking about the Riverhead project and Carl, you lead us in that.
Okay, Commissioner Kaufman, before you leave.
Yeah, dude, don't go anywhere.
I have to leave by 5:30, so he's giving me 4:40. And I have to go to rehearsal.
Hey, by the way, Ray had surgery today, just so everyone knows.
Okay, and by 7 o'clock I have to leave also. Commissioner Kaufman, you know, I, you know, I always cry when we sort of lose farmland, you know? But it's a tough thing. However, this project is located in an industrial zoning district, which makes it actually, I think it's a great project for Riverhead. It's a, it's a clean, sustainable, renewable energy project. And what I like about this, what Riverhead did is they, it's industrial A zoning and yet it's still in an agricultural district. So if this, this can revert back to farming, say this project doesn't go over or whatever, it's in an ag district and has the, you know, right to farm laws all in there. So overall, this, it's a great, it's a great project. One of the things I wanted to talk about real quick was the staff recommendations and which I agree with except I was just wondering on number two, whether the town should require the applicant to be prohibited from exporting any soil material classified as prime agriculture soils off the subject parcels, which is very good. I'd like to strengthen it actually to a modification and I'll tell you why. I mean, we've had some projects here. Actually, even, I think it was a couple of years ago, we had that project in Fort Jeff where they were gonna grow tomatoes. Well, that just turned out into be a big sand money operation. It's all closed down and everything's gone. Well, they've left, as far as I understand, they have left town and taken all the grant money with them.
The attorney's still there.
The attorney's still there. So I mean, you know, it's just, just a protection that I'd like to see as a modification, just that those soils are being, that, you know, that, that, we're not gonna, and I trust that's not going to happen. I don't think it will happen, but I'd just like to see it as a modification to protect those soils because someday it may revert back to agricultural land, as is in the ag district.
Well, there's no reason why, if you're putting in solar panels, that, you know, they shouldn't be, obviously there's some grading or whatever, but they could all be left on site, I would think. So I don't think that would be, you know, an issue. I would personally support that, but since there are eight of us, I guess I'd like to know whether anyone, I don't wanna hear if you agree, because that's fine. I'll assume people agree unless they do.
I do have two comments to reinforce that. What it boils down to is, it has been a problem with other sites where they do strip it off and sterilize.
Yeah, disagree, you're disagreeing, that's all you can do.
Just in the interest of time, if there's anything in particular. Well, I'd like to know if anyone disagrees and then we can have a conversation to convince those who disagree that's a good idea. But if no one disagrees, we're not gonna spend time on it. Does anyone disagree with the idea that there'd be a modification, that people, they should keep the soil on the site? Is there any disagreement about that? Carl suggests. Alright, seeing none, we avoid the conversation. Any other issues? Glennis.
At Brookhaven National Lab, they basically sterilized the site and they have two issues. This site is actually in the mechanic estuary, so the groundwater and is right adjacent to wetlands. And herbicide and pesticide to keep vegetation out is pretty heavy. And also, they just have the gravel roads and they generate a lot of dust which causes them to have to continually wash the panels. So I would like to add another modification that, I'd like to say no, but, and compromise, careful thought to herbicide and pesticide use. Or maybe a herbicide and pesticide management plan will be part of it. And maybe a comment that they should consider alternative birdway treatments to avoid dust.
I don't like either of those modifications. I'm gonna pay for those comments. Anyone else feel differently? Anyone object to making the comments? Right, anyone feels strongly about making the modifications?
Herbicide, I would, I'm fine.
I don't think we should get into that. Well, again, because we got eight of us, we can all just say what we think. Everyone gets a veto here, how about that? I think those are fine comments. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I would make a just a comment.
There were two of them, herbicide and pesticide management plan, one. Second was.
Just let them wear, I mean, they're safe, you know.
Oh, look, these are big boys, they do this all the time, you know, so. And what was the second one, I'm sorry, was about the.
Consider alternatives for the rivers.
And Glennis points that kicks us first, which is in the way of the PB, which, which obviously I would assume the applicant would know, but hey. That's the problem. Okay, is there any objections? Any other conversation?
I just had one question. In the document, it says they had a conceptual planting plan, but on the site plan on page seven, they show a fence. I just wanted clarification even from Carl or Andy.
Let Andy answer that question about the application. And then Carl, you can supplement. Andy, what do you got? There's a berm I don't know.
Yeah, there's a berm that's going around the edge along Edwards Avenue and there's a planting plan that went along with the berm.
Okay, but if you look at page seven, it says a proposed fence and it doesn't look like there's anything that's, that's planting.
That's good, well.
Well, let's get burnt.
The berm isn't called out, but I think there is a berm that runs along Edwards.
Well, as much as we'd like to hear from you, Chris, we can't.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, yeah, too late.
Could I fill out a card now? I'll tell you why I didn't.
Talk to Andy.
I'll tell you why I didn't. I purposely did not because I didn't wanna speak when the room was full of people here to talk about our wood.
Appreciate that.
And I thought that maybe I could fill in a card or answer a question when the room looked like this.
Andy, if there's any questions we have, but I think we're okay. Are we okay?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're okay with disagreeing. Okay, okay.
Carl, you're happy, too?
I'm happy, I'm happy.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. You can tell me later, Chris.
The Bankery Subcommittee, state law and county law. Did we do that all right, counsel? Did we do that all right? What's that?
I said Andy can find out.
Andy can find out, let us know. Okay, Andy, what's the answer?
Okay, there is a fence around the property. There is also behind the fence, a two-tiered berm. So there's a double row of plantings behind the fence. Fence is for security.
Great. So the motion, the staff report has been adopted, there's two new, two new comments and then the one modification about the soils on property. Motion by Carl, seconded by Glennis, all in favor, please raise your hand. That's eight, zero. Last thing is Smithtown. What I would suggest on Smithtown, Andy, is, I think everyone's read the staff report. Give us your highlights and then we'll turn to John for comments on the project.
The highlight is, is that this is a rental garden apartment complex. Attached multifamily housing would run under those same planning criteria. You wanna be in a downtown, you wanna be in a walkable community. The difference between this project and the project before us is that this project is on State Route 25 and there is a bus mass transit route. So to the extent that this project mitigates some of those locational criteria, I think that in this case it does because it is located on State Route 25. I can run through the slides real quick. This is the subject property. It is a former landfill and a current concrete manufacturing plant. Next line. A little closer, you can see the, the character of the area. It's mostly industrialized. There are some car dealerships up and down the road. To the north, to the top of the slide, to the north, there are more industrial uses and to the east, to the right of the slide, you can see that there are more concrete operations and more sand and gravel, concrete demolition degree operations. Okay, that's an oblique of the site. You can see the site is predominantly disturbed. On the left side of the slide, there is some naturally occurring vegetation, if you will. The top right part of the slide is what is left of the former landfill. This was a town C and D landfill at one point in its history. Okay, this shows the zoning in the area. You can see the subject property is zoned for the most part in the one zoning category. Can't read it from here. Light industrial, but there's a strip of R10, residential 10,000 minimum lot size, which is the tanish colorings on the left side of the subject property. Okay, these are soils on the subject property. You can see predominantly on the right-hand side, you've got gravel pits as the predominant soil type. We don't see that too often, but that's reflective of the history of the subject property. The remainder of the properties are, I'm sorry, the remainder of the soils are various different associations. Okay, that's the subject property in the school district. There are no boundary issues with regard to the subject property. And this is, and I repeat, the conceptual site plan for this change of zone application. We had this sent to us as part of the environmental assessment that they put together. But again, this is a conceptual site plan. I'm not gonna read the staff report, but let me just tell you the upper right-hand corner of the conceptual site plan is where the proposed sewage treatment plant is going to go. The left-hand side of the site plan, you can see that gray, green area that looks like a soccer field or a football field. That is the recharge area for the stormwater system. They have a stormwater retention pond just at the top of that and then it would go into the rings and leaching pools. So if I could, I'll just go through the recommendations of staff then?
Yes, it's top of that, yes.
Okay, so staff is recommending approval of this proposed application, which is a 260-unit garden apartment community. Staff is recommending that the commission provide the town with the following comments. Early review of the Suffolk County Department of Health Services and Suffolk County Department of Public Works is warranted and the petitioners should be directed to contact and begin dialogue as early as possible. That's with respect to the proposed sewage treatment plan. The second comment is that the applicants look at the commission's guidelines on managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. Again, we believe that there's ample opportunity on that site concerning such a conceptual site plan to put in more natural treatments. It looks like they gotta start with the stormwater retention pond, but that goes into leaching pools. We think that the commission's guidelines could help and make that a little bit more natural. The third comment is that the petitioners be directed to contact New York State DOT and DPW to resolve access issues with regard to the subject property. The petitioners should be encouraged to review the commission's guidebook related to energy efficiency. There is little information in the referral materials on energy efficiency. There's little material, there's little information in the material referred to the commission on public safety and therefore we're recommending a comment go back to the town, that the petitioners look at the commission's guidelines on public safety. Six comments that the petitioners review the planning commission guidelines on universal design. And the seventh comment, we've reworked between the time we issued the staff report to you and now. And that would read that a pedestrian walking path navigating the proposed development should be included particularly through any accessible open space. So in other words, they didn't provide any walkability to this plant, so we're adding a comment that there should be some walkability provided in the site plan when they get to it.
Yeah, and just to be clear for everyone, this is just change of zone, site plan to come.
Site plan to come, any variances may come.
Yep, okay. Thank you, Andy, appreciate that. First we'll turn to Commissioner Fan and then Commissioner Kaufman for comments from the Smithtown perspective.
Okay, Andy, thank you very much. Andy, if you go back to the overhead on the aerial shot. This is a piece of property that, you know, I have the luxury of driving by every single day and it is a, it is exactly all the things that we talk about here about from a regional standpoint of transforming existing flooded property into a, turning the ugly Dublin into a swamp. Apartments are highly needed in the town of Smithtown.
It's very poetic, gentlemen.
We are, we are so heavily concentrated in the single-family zoning that the, that this will be a much-needed addition to our housing stock. We're virtually 100% occupied in the apartment arena, which they go lovely. Matter of fact, if we wanted to build a commercial building that tall, we would have opposition, so. So just as a point of note, that sits right on 25. The good news is, there is a bus stop in front of this, in front of that great wall spent down there, so.
Wouldn't want to get off there.
Exactly. But on a serious note, this is, Andy, go back to the aerial, please.
Sure.
This is a, I think this is where we, as a commission, should make a statement about regional significance and that, that larger box on the upper, I guess, northeastern quadrant, six acres, was a former town dome. Now, right behind it, you see, is a 16-acre parcel, which is owned by the town of Smithtown, which is a transfer station of sorts, where they make debris and separation and stuff like that. This area is an area that's in desperate need of sewers. Our planning director, our planning chairman, and myself met with Smithtown, how many moons ago?
At least a year, it's about a year and a half.
That was probably about three, three years ago. And we discussed a plan that would provide a sewer for this area. Now, we, on this application, see that the applicant is providing an onsite sewer treatment plant, but I think what we should do is send a message back to the town of Smithtown in the form of a comment, that they should look to increase the capacity of this sewer treatment plant to get the advantage of having other property owners tap into it. And I think it would be a benefit for our, protection of our water resource, nitrate loading, right, Glenn? And if we're going to go through the brain damage of creating a sewer treatment plant, why not create the excess capacity that we can further accomplish these regional goals? Because let's face it, these are goals that this commission, I think, holds dear, protection of water, protection of nitrate, reduce nitrate loading, and then of course, economic development. So...
John, just a reminder, the nearest sewer area is just the downtown area?
Negative, there's no sewer.
Downtown's all the way on 25.
Negative, negative.
Till you get to the mall, right?
Till you get to, the mall has their own sewer treatment plant. So this would be, this would be the spark that would transform this whole area. Now, next door, you have L1, L2 zoning, which again, with proper sewer treatment, it would spawn the, those properties to be transformed, and this whole area could see a rebirth. And in addition to that, the, if you go back just to comment, and I very rarely want to make comments on site plans, but if you go back to the site plan itself, Andy, I think the town, we should make a comment, the town should on their own motion, rezone the entire subject parcel, which will include that little finger, because that's a single-family home and it's in the midst of everything there. Obviously, it's, if we're going to do the zoning to encourage, or at least encourage the applicant to make that a part of the subdivision to acquisition or a, through zoning. So, but that's not as important as my first comment, which would be to make a statement about increasing the size of...
Since legislator Kennedy's here, I mean, we can just say that we felt, you know, that, and this is, you know, John was the spearhead for this meeting that we had with Frank DeRubius a year, two years ago, with some members of the town board. That was a real opportunity area to put that SDP and then you'd be able to fan out, of course, getting into downtown, which is on the sewer, as was mentioned, and then all along 25. So, you know, they're starting to encroach on the property we thought was the best, but at least it's, they're developing, which is good. It's just, it's right next to where that property we identified, just north of the front.
Where is the SDP itself? We talked about this, the pale parcel, is that the out parcel or is it where the arrow is?
This is where the SDP is proposed.
Oh, that's where the SDP?
Negative, negative.
No, that's the green area. That's where the covered landfill, right?
Right there, that's the SDP.
No, this is the stormwater retention area, this is the...
The SDP.
That's not what I have in the referral.
It looks like it on the site, I don't know, doesn't it?
But the area we were talking about for a larger...
And the leaching, that's the leaching field. Look at it closely. That's where they're proposing to put the SDP. What I'm saying is, is move the...
I understand that that sort of looks like the, the referral materials, those are the leaching rings for the stormwater system.
Oh, okay.
That's what we've got on our map.
And we're sorry, Andy, didn't clarify, where is the SDP on the property?
The SDP is proposed to be the northeast corner.
In that big green area?
Yes.
The area that we originally talked about with the town of Smithtown, where we thought an ideal property was directly 10 feet north of that.
Right.
You know, and because that's the town dump, or as John was saying, whatever the new area.
Yeah, but in this instance, I think what legislator Kennedy's saying is, that's the area of the old town dump. So what better place to clean up the dump and then put a sewer treatment plant to be sized for regional purposes for this area?
They're talking about taking it out.
Taking it up.
They're going to clean it up.
They're going to clean it up. Yeah, they're going to remediate it and then...
What is the capacity of the plant for this project now?
It's just for that facility, right?
Just for this facility.
Andy, basically just for that facility?
It's just for that facility, but they would be required to have 100% expansion areas.
But what is it now, Andy? 200,000, 300,000?
I don't have the stat.
You don't have it?
But the property north of it?
Right.
Town-owned, huge opportunity, absolutely central located, between 25 and 20...
There's no doubt, there's no doubt that as, you know, we've looked at what's been an eight-year, almost a nine-year effort to go ahead and sewer the two hamlets. The only way we've moved forward is we bifurcated and we now have some real momentum off the Kings Park Business District. But that's left Smithtown somewhat stranded and, you know, we've got to look for some kind of a viable alternative. So if the developer was amenable, it's very realistic that you could get buy-in from the commercial district. Again, it's a matter of, you know, what's the capacity for this and how much could we expand?
You know, maybe the town can contribute in, but, you know, with their property just to the north, make it a larger expansion area. We'll include in this referral to the town that suggestion, but it might be something for you to follow up with.
I'd be happy, I...
I know Commissioner Kaufman wanted to say anything, I know Commissioner Casey has to leave, Emma has to leave in five minutes, so we know we need to vote before she has to go, so. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, straight up.
We can continue this conversation after we go through what we need to do with this project.
I have a whole list of pros and I have a whole list of cons. I mean, as John is saying, and I agree with a lot of what he's saying, 11% of housing in the town is rental versus single-family. The mix is deficient, it's pricing people out, we've got a big need for rental, it's a regional need, I hope tonight. This 11 units per acre, 17 is allowed, it's a good cluster, even though the building heights, two of the buildings don't conform, it can, the reason it's being clustered is it can camouflage a little bit from the nearby family areas. It's not a new use, it's redevelopment or an exchange. Now, it could be a hell of a lot worse, and that's something we're going to hop into for a second. An office park would have 3,000 cars. Right now, this has 1,750 cars anticipated. An office park could have 3,000, medical park could have even more. This is the best of a bunch of bad choices. Residential is probably the good thing, given what could be coming in over there. The reason I bring that up is, traffic stinks in the area. Poor circulation patterns, there's only one link to the area, Jericho's overloaded, you've got one mile backup to westbound, half a mile at eastbound. Jericho during rush hour has 3,000 cars per hour. This will give a 6% increase in traffic at any time, and rush hours will be worse. It's not TOD, it's not workable, the impact on the secondary roads is a problem, and a lot, a bunch of people are publicly hearing raised for the fact that there might be gangs moving in. Aside from that, it's pros and cons, okay? It's a regional need, but traffic stinks. I don't know how to handle the traffic. The town is essentially in favor of this. Again, it's much better than other things that could occur in that area. The only other comment I have is rezoning that out parcel, basically make that guy non-conforming, and I don't know what that might do to his residential values. On the other hand, he's stuck in the middle of everything and right near the leaching field, so he might want to move out quick. I'm not sure about the zoning and changing it, so I don't know if I can...
Yeah, I was just making it as a point, I don't know if we want to add that to the report. I think by virtue of doing that, his property would be going through zoning three times, four times what it is currently.
You think it would be enough, not a debt?
Not 100%.
So it sounds like we can maybe strike that one. Let's focus on the sewer capacity expansion.
I don't want to mess with somebody's private stuff that's not part of this, not a project. What it boils down to is, traffic sucks and amend that, traffic stinks, but it could be worse. And is it a collapse of zoning in the area? No. Is it the best location in the area? It ain't great, it's surrounded by cars, but what else are you going to do with the property, is what it boils down to. And I don't think it's so dense that it is going to create a problem that way.
Okay.
I'm baffled, I think it's...
Two suggestions. Number seven, add, also provide a continuous and safe pedestrian route to the bus stop.
Okay.
And also add as a comment, the same one about the land banking for the parking, because they're providing 551 parking spaces, but only 390 are required. So again, that's a huge lot covered.
All right, any objection to those? Any objection to John's suggestion about encouraging the applicants to look at having excess sewer capacity onsite for, and talking to the town about regional sewer needs or regional sewer capacity?